Melissa, I believe we're all here.
Yes.
And can you let Miriam know we're ready to go?
Hey, everyone.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the San Bernardino City Council meeting. This is a special meeting of June 2, 2020. Call the meeting to order. City Clerk, if I can add a role.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
And Mayor Medina?
Here. Before we get into our two topics in the special meeting, since we have some folks viewing us, we wanted to also communicate, I'm going to turn it over to the manager in just a second, that the county manager, under his authority, and Director of Emergency Services, and in consultation with the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff of San Mateo County, is claiming at 8:30 tonight, a curfew for tonight and tomorrow. And so, when that goes through, it ends at 5:00 a.m. the next day. City Manager, could you add anything to that for us as a community?
Mayor, I think you've said it all. There is a curfew beginning tonight at 8:30 p.m. going through 5:00 a.m. That same curfew will be in effect Wednesday night, beginning at 8:30 p.m. and ending at 5:00 a.m. Thursday morning. It is in order to protect the community from looting and any potential civil unrest. The county administrator, in his statement, mentioned that he hopes that that does not occur and all the protests are peaceful. But the curfew is out of an abundance of caution, given the civil unrest that has been occurring throughout the country.
Thank you, and I know that there has been questions or comments in regards to our mall, Tampran, and it being, having boards on it, and that is correct. It is also occurring, whether it's in San Mateo and other jurisdictions throughout the city, the same is occurring. And that is, again, to be better safe than sorry. And it's taking precautions and want to ensure the community that the city staff, along with the public safety personnel, are following it, maintaining, and are coming up with plans and are prepared to oversee the city in the next couple of days. So, we ask for your support as well and be mindful of the curfew, and we are still in sheltered place. With that, let's move on to item number three, public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any folks that wish to speak on items that are not on this agenda tonight?
Yes, we have one from Tim. Going to bring you in the room. Just one moment. Tim, can you hear us? We're trying to get Tim unmuted, just one moment.
Okay.
Tim, can you hear us?
Actually, it's Reina.
Hi, Reina.
Yes, hi, good evening. It's me who will be speaking tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize. So, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'm going to start by first thanking Laura, Linda Mason, for an amazing job she is doing in San Bruno as a city council member. We are so proud of her for everything that she's doing. And thank you, Linda. Continue doing what you're doing. Doing an superb job. Then I want to actually talk about recology. Because Linda, the community, myself and the community learned that recology has not met half of the contract that was entered 24 years ago. And that seems very, I feel it's appalling that that is not being addressed by any of the city councils previously, that we had to wait for Linda to actually inform us of this information. And I believe that contract can be void if recology does not actually fulfill its part. So, I hope all of you review this contract and enforce part of the contract with recology. Secondly, I want to say, and this is a feedback, I was appalled when I saw last city council member meeting, where Linda Mason was scolded and reprimanded, reprimanded as a third grade grader for doing her job. I don't want to see that behavior in public. You guys hold city council, you know, public serving jobs. You have to conduct yourself with respect. So, I expect moving forward, we will not be seeing that. And I hope that you all respect each other. Lastly, I want, I want to say that Melissa, you need to be transparent with the community. We never would have learned about this if it wasn't for Linda. So, I, moving forward, I expect more transparency from every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reina. Next person, please.
Okay, just one moment. The next person is Tom Hamilton. Just one moment, Tom, we're bringing you in.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Hi, good evening, honorable mayor and city council members, city staff, and the San Bruno community watching remotely. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that many San Bruno shops and restaurants are open for business and really need our support now more than ever. So, please continue to shop local and dine local as much as possible. Also, when dining with a local restaurant, your best option to ensure that the restaurant receives maximum revenue from your visit is to call the restaurant directly, place your order, and then walk, bike, or drive over to pick it up. A delivery apps are very convenient, but they can take a significant portion of the revenue away from the business. There are certainly times where getting delivery is your best option. I only ask that you consider picking up your own takeout where possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Okay, just one moment. We have one more, Stephen Seymour, bringing you into the room.
Good evening, this is Sandra Perez Vargas.
Hi, Sandra.
How are you doing? Very good. I want to thank Linda Mason and Marty Medina for supporting our LGBT community. We had a Last Moment Event yesterday in front of City Hall. I put that up on Facebook and thoroughly expecting I'd get two or three people out there with me waving the pride flag. It was such an energetic celebration. I was very happy to see that our Mayor Rico Medina came to join us. He was there for a good amount of time, so thank you for doing that. But I would really love to see the city leading from ahead, not even falling from behind at this point. We have all our neighboring cities, most of waving the flag, doing something for our community. And it really almost shamed me to be the one speaking at the steps. I think it should have been our mayor. I think that would have been much more appropriate. But I wanted to send out a message to our LGBT community and anybody else who feels excluded, anybody, whatever color, race. And so, thank you, people like Tom Hamilton, Reina and Tim, Marty Medina, everyone who joined us, Adriana Shea. Thank you so much. It was a beautiful, beautiful moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Melissa, are there any other speakers?
I see no hands.
I totally apologize.
But you can. So, why don't we go ahead, and we're going to move on to item four on the agenda. Melissa?
Mayor, someone just raised their hand. I don't know if they want to handle that.
Okay, this will be the last one. Go ahead and...
Riley Gibbons, just one moment. Riley, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I hope everyone's doing well. This is regarding the marijuana topic. I'm not too sure if I should wait for that to be spoke about or to speak my thought.
Riley, if that's okay, it is on the agenda. That's the next one about to go to.
Awesome, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Anything else? That's it? Okay, so we're going to go on to item four A. Melissa?
One moment. Sorry, Mayor, just one moment, my computer froze.
Okay, I can read it.
Yeah, thank you.
Reduct Urgency Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Moratorium on Evictions or Non-Payment of Rent by Small Businesses, Commercial Tenants, Directly Affected by COVID-19. And Riley, I am sorry, it is the next one after this. I apologize for my error. So, city attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayors, Mayor, members of the city council. There's no PowerPoint for this, so we're guaranteed that nothing will go wrong with the PowerPoint. So, this item has been brought to you because we did not know before May 31 whether the governor was going to reestablish the authority of local agencies to adopt a residential and commercial eviction moratoria. And so, in anticipation that the governor might or might not do that, we wanted to put this item and agendize it for the very first public meeting after May 31, which is tonight on June 2. So, when we wrote the staff report, we did not know, and when it was finalized, we didn't know whether the governor was going to extend that authorization or not. It turns out that the governor did extend that authorization on May 28. And that authorization for cities to either extend or re-adopt an urgency ordinance like this one has now been extended to July 28. So, the staff report that's in front of you outlines what the city council has already done to protect commercial tenants from the impacts, the economic impacts of COVID-19. And as you remember from the last meeting, what it does is gives those tenants, those commercial tenants, an opportunity to allege a COVID-19 economic impact and defer payment of commercial rent for up to six months, an initial three-month period, and then three 30-day periods after that. So, the ordinance that is in front of you is exactly the same as the ordinance that you already adopted that expired on May 31. And it is before you tonight for re-adoption. And if you wish, you can re-adopt the ordinance such that it expires, not as the ordinance says in the staff report, because we didn't know, but expires on July 28 instead of June. So, the governor gave an additional month. And the staff recommendation, if you're willing to do that, is to extend it for that additional month. So, it's consistent with the governor's authority to local agencies. There are no other changes in the ordinance. And at this point, I don't have any further comments about it. I'm happy to answer any questions. The city is not aware of any particular instances where commercial tenants may or may not have taken advantage of the ordinance, but the city wouldn't necessarily be notified of those things, since that's a private transaction between the commercial tenant and the commercial landlord. But nevertheless, we thought it was prudent to be proactive and come to you with an ordinance like this in case the governor decided to re-extend that authorization. The final point is that if the city council does decide to re-adopt the ordinance, there's not going to be any gap in coverage between the expiration of the first ordinance and this one. And that's because this ordinance is applicable to all non-expired notices of eviction as of May 31. So, it covers the time, May 31, when that first ordinance expired. And then, if adopted tonight as recommended, would go all the way through to July 28. So, that concludes my report. I don't have any other comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
And again, Mark, this will take a four-fifth vote?
That's correct.
Okay, and again, the county has extended, and the governor has allowed this opportunity. So, do we have any questions or comments from council on this action? Linda?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the resolution does say through June, and I want to ask the council to extend it through July. And I believe that it would then also align with the federal government. So, that's the only request I'd make. Thank you.
The staff's already had recommended that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, staff is asking us, July, I think you, the staff asking us to do that.
Right, so I just want to say I support that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is, or any action by council?
Public comment?
We have no hands up for this item.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Any action or comments from council?
I will make a motion that we re-adopt our urgency ordinance.
And through the chair, Mr. Mayor, that would be through July 28?
Correct. Second. Anyone? You have to unmute yourself to second.
I second.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next item, item B. Provide direction regarding placing a cannabis initiative measure on the November 2020 ballot. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So, this is a PowerPoint presentation. So, we're going to keep our fingers crossed and wait just a couple of minutes until it comes on. All right, looks like we're all set. We'll give it a try. All right, I think that's fine. Thank you again. So, this evening, the title of the report is Commercial Cannabis Ballot Measure. And unfortunately, I see that my clicker does not appear to be working. So, if you can just give me, whoops, there it goes. All right, let's just try it and make sure it works. All right, so far, so good. You seem to be having a bad experience with these things, so thanks, Dervon, for that, sure. All right, well, tonight, this is our agenda. We're going to review the legal landscape surrounding a potential cannabis ordinance ballot measure. Clicker is not working. We're going to review what other cities in San Mateo County have done and their particular outcomes. We're going to discuss the features of a potential ballot measure and potential next steps for possibly putting a ballot measure on the November 2020 ballot, and then provide direction to staff. So, that's our agenda for this evening. So, let's take a couple of minutes and quickly review the current legal landscape. And that consists of sort of three main topic areas. First of all, the federal government. So, as some of us may know, under federal law, cannabis still remains a controlled substance that is illegal to possess or sell in certain quantities. However, under state law, Proposition 64 was adopted by a majority of the voters on November 8, 2016. And that proposition allowed a variety of uses in the state of California. So, let's just quickly go through those. So, that allows recreational use, possession, purchase, sale, or distribution, allows indoor cultivation of up to six plants for personal use, and indicates that if you have a commercial cannabis activity, that's subject to getting a state license. Prop 64 also did allow cities to regulate or prohibit some or all commercial cannabis activities. So, while the state authorized it, it did allow cities to restrict or regulate those activities. And then finally, Prop 64 imposed excise and sales taxes totaling about 22%. And so, one question we had was, well, how much does the city get of that? And the answer is, the same as of all other sales tax. Whoops. Which is 1.5% in total sales tax, including the Measure G tax. So, that's the federal and the state legal landscape. Let's take a look at what the city of San Bruno has done so far. So, in 2011, medical cannabis distribution facilities were prohibited by ordinance, Chapter 6.58. And then, in 2018, the city council prohibited commercial cannabis activities, except as those allowed by state law, and that's the personal cultivation. And that was adopted by the city council following a couple of years of public meetings and study. And it's also important to note that the city council does continue to retain the legal authority to either repeal or modify any of those ordinances. And we'll talk a little bit about that later tonight. Let's take a look and see, what are the issues for discussion this evening? And this is coming to you because, at the end of April, the city council requested a study session about placing a cannabis measure on the November 2020 ballot. So, what did we do to respond to that? We did some research, and we requested information from consultants, because we're not all experts on everything, unfortunately. And the staff report that you see in front of you was contributed to by at least five city departments. We also consulted with HDL, which is a consulting firm that has advised all San Mateo County cities that have adopted a ballot measure. And so, we thought they would be a good source of information to tell us what to look for and potentially also what to avoid. We also checked with our outside counsel for tax ordinance guidance, because if there's a tax measure that's proposed, we want to make sure that it's done correctly and properly. So, one question I've been asked anyway is, well, how much time did this staff report take? And how much time have you spent on this? And the answer was sort of surprising when we tallied it all up. So, so far through this evening, staff collectively has spent about 75 hours in preparing the staff report. And that might provoke a number of reactions. One of them might be, well, why did you spend so much time on this staff report? You know, wasn't it easier than that? And the answer really is no. You know, staff is here to provide you with the absolutely best professional advice we can. We don't always get it right. We sometimes make mistakes, hopefully not very often. But this is a sort of interdepartmental effort that is not just the purview of one particular department. And we did spend a lot of time vetting the information that's in the report. So, let's take a look at what the 20 San Mateo County jurisdictions have done. And there's, you know, 19 cities and the county of San Mateo. So, let's take a look. So, just to review, we have nine cities, including San Bruno, that currently prohibit all commercial cannabis activities. And you can read the list on the screen over there. There's a variety of communities with, you know, somewhat diverse populations. We have two cities in the county that prohibit all commercial cannabis activities except for distribution within their boundaries. And so, what does that actually entail? So, we dug a little bit deeper. And what we learned from HDL was that there are actually about 85 entities that are distributing cannabis without state or local licenses or permits that are supplying the needs of the residents in San Mateo County. And, you know, one question we asked, well, where are these people distributing from? And the answer is mostly from San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, and Santa Cruz. There may be others that we're not aware of, but these are all sort of non-permitted, not licensed by the state distributions. The other thing we found when we asked the experts is that these activities are very difficult to tax. In fact, I think we'd probably go farther as to say they're virtually impossible to tax. It's hard for staff to go around and, you know, chase a panel van that's unmarked, let's say. So, it's not obvious that these are occurring, these distributions are occurring, especially because there's no license or permit for them. So, a distribution, our consultants have indicated, is not an activity that if we, if the city, or if a city were to permit, would generate any real tax revenue. All right, so that's 11 cities in the county. And then we have eight cities that have actually adopted ballot measures to tax and/or regulate, you know, various sorts of cannabis activities. So, let's take just a second and go through, in summary, what those are. So, we have taxes that those cities have adopted ranging from 2.5% to 10%. So, why is there such a big range? And the answer is that there's actually a larger range than that. It's even more complicated. Some of the cities tax per ounce, per pound, per plant, per something. The range from 2.5% to 10% depends on what kind of business it is. So, some businesses are taxed at the lower end, some are taxed at the higher end. So, it's actually very complicated what some cities have done in putting together their, what they believe is the appropriate range of taxes for the businesses that they are going to allow. So, what sort of regulations might there be? And those really fall into zoning and permitting. So, an example of a zoning regulation would be to say that the businesses can only be a certain distance away, can only be from schools or parks or other sensitive uses. Another example of a zoning regulation could be that they might be limited in some way. And then permitting regulations are usually detailed regulations regarding how those businesses are supposed to be operating. So, those are things that cities up and down the peninsula have implemented as part of their regulation. So, what we also discovered when we went back and looked at the staff reports for those cities is that the revenue that those cities expected to generate at the time that they either adopted a regulation or put a tax on the ballot ranged somewhere between $100,000 to $1.5 million. It just sort of depended on what they were interested in doing and what the tax rate was for certain activities. So, the consultants for the cities made certain assumptions. They assumed a certain number of businesses would come in, and they thought this was a reasonable estimate of the amount of revenue that those cities would generate. So, let's take a look and see what happened in those eight cities that do currently allow, that had ballot measures and currently allow cannabis activities. So, as it turns out, out of those eight cities that have allowed it, two have collected revenue from those measures. Pacifica being the main example of the most successful city to have collected revenue, and they're estimating between $300,000 and $500,000 a year, which is quite substantial. The other city that reported revenues was South San Francisco, which was under, all we could get from them is under $100,000 since January of last year. So, we weren't able to get any more information about their activities. So, those are the two that have generated any revenue at all. So, that was actually quite surprising to me and everybody else on our team. And so, we asked why. And what our consultants told us, these are HDL, the ones that helped all those cities adopt those ballot measures, is that there are really barriers to entry for new businesses in this industry. And what are those barriers to entry? So, the first one is permit fees and costs that are imposed by cities. So, as part of, you know, a regulatory permitting measure, the city would establish a fee for reviewing and processing an application. And those costs can be somewhat high because these applications are not necessarily easy to review, and they take a lot of time. The second barrier to entry into the business, if you're a new cannabis business, is that the city may have levied a tax. And that tax is over and above the state tax, which, as you saw on the prior slide, is 22%. So, any taxes above that are additional taxes that the business would have to pay. Another barrier to entry is, I think, what we would call a lack of a stable banking option. So, about a couple of years ago, I think it was, there was a really comprehensive report that was prepared to the California Legislature about establishing some sort of stable banking options in the state of California. And at the end of the report, it was about 100 pages. I remember reading through it. The conclusion was, it'll have to be studied further, and we'll take action by the legislature. So, I'm not sure that anything has really happened about that, but that was one barrier to entry that were identified by our expert consultants. The other thing we don't want to forget about that our consultants told us is there still remains a really robust underground economy. And why is that? Well, we saw the 85 delivery businesses that aren't licensed or permitted. But also, those businesses, even if they're retail, for example, really are, you know, they don't have to, they've got to pay taxes. So, the underground businesses do not have to pay taxes. And as a result of that, presumably, they can, there's enough money there for them to stay in business. We also were told that investment dollars are dwindling. Some of those investment dollars, in fact, many of those dollars, come from various places overseas. And those monies to fund cannabis businesses in California, at least in California, are not as available as they used to be. not as available as they used to be. And then what we were also told is that, in essence, only retail cannabis operations generate significant direct revenue for cities. So many of the other things like manufacturing, or cultivation, or testing, or other things like that, or distribution, as we saw, they don't generate a significant direct revenue. And then finally, we were told specifically with respect to Pacifica, that their businesses existed previously. So they were legacy businesses that, in essence, did not have some of these barriers to entry that new businesses would have. And so that's how HDL explained to staff why only two out of eight cities have actually collected any revenue from operating businesses. So there, we were not able to locate any operating cannabis businesses in, that were licensed, in any places other than Pacifica and South San Francisco. All right, so let's take a look and see what would a ballot measure in San Bruno contain? Well, the first thing it could contain is a tax. And in order to put a tax on the ballot, that requires a 2/3 vote of the city council, which means four affirmative votes. And we only need one meeting to adopt that resolution. And majority voter approval is required, assuming it's a general tax. And I think pretty much all cities on the peninsula that have put one of these on the ballot have had it be a general tax. So it only requires majority approval. So that's one thing a ballot measure could contain. Second thing a ballot measure could contain is some sort of regulation. And we've talked about zoning or permitting before. So for those, voter approval actually is not legally required. That's something that the city council could do on their own. Or the city council could, by majority vote, place a regulatory ordinance on the ballot if they desired. So really, there's two options here. The city council could amend our current ordinances without putting it on the ballot or place a regulatory measure on the ballot. And again, only one meeting is necessary to adopt that resolution and majority voter approval if it were placed on the ballot is required. Before we leave this slide, there are a couple of caveats that we heard from our consultant. And the first caveat was to be careful because if you put a regulatory measure on the ballot, the voters might not approve something that generates revenue. And that's exactly what happened in Half Moon Bay. So their city council decided to put a variety of measures on the ballot to see what the voters wanted. And it turns out the voters didn't want retail, and that's really the only thing that generates revenue. So Half Moon Bay thought they would get growers, they would get cultivation, you know, for obvious reasons. It's, that's, you know, that's a lot of the business out there, but that actually has not occurred. The other caveat about a regulatory measure is it does require substantial work to develop. And somebody might ask, well, why can't you just copy what some other city did, especially one of the successful ones? And so there's two answers to that. The first is that there's only been two successful cities. And of those two, one of them already had these businesses. So it's not exactly clear whether their regulatory ordinance really, really makes any difference. So it's not exactly clear what one should emulate. But also, those ordinances are really specific to that particular city. They relate to zoning districts that are in that city that may or may not be the same here. They relate to how much staff they have, to how much they farm out their consultant work. And so there's a lot of complexities to drafting a regulatory ordinance that is not simply just going and copying somebody else's. And I think we found this when staff was working on the short-term rental ordinance. It seemed easy enough at the beginning to simply look at what other cities have done, but it turns out that a lot of cities have done a lot of different things. And you have to pick and choose the things that are best for the city of San Bruno. And then the final caveat is that for a regulatory measure on the ballot where you're asking voters a question, some prior community input is, I think, a desirable thing. And we'll talk about that in a little, just a little bit. So those are the kinds of things that a ballot measure could contain, either a tax or a regulation. So the next question is, how can the city council move forward with a ballot measure if they're interested in putting one on? So first question to ask ourselves is, how should we develop the language of a ballot measure? And there's a couple of different ways to do that. First off, what the city has done before is to do some polling and then develop a measure around what garners public support. And this has previously been done by the city for its last two successful ballot measures. Another possibility is to use another city's ordinance, and we've talked a little bit about that. That does require work to modify and to make sure that it's consistent with the city of San Bruno's goals and desires. The city council could certainly provide some specific direction to staff. And finally, the city could retain experts to assist with drafting that measure. And we've, you've seen attached to the staff report, you have a comprehensive proposal from HDL, which we'll talk about in just a couple of minutes. So those are some of the potential or possible next steps. And here's some more. So the next question to ask yourself is, what level of tax would be appropriate? And how are we going to figure that out? So there's a couple of ways to do this. One way is to say, well, we'll just charge the highest of what everybody charges. So 10% Daly City and San Carlos. Or we could say, well, we don't want to do that. We can charge the lowest, which is 2.5% for Half Moon Bay and San Mateo, at least for some of the commercial activities. Or we could pick another rate. South San Francisco says 5%, Brisbane says 6%. So it could be any one of those. Another option is you could set a relatively low rate, but then give the city council discretion to raise it. That's actually something that Pacifica does, which we thought was interesting. It starts at a 6% rate initially, and then the city council was authorized to raise it by the ballot measure to 10%. And that worked in Pacifica, but again, remember it worked because they had legacy businesses that were already established. And then finally, the city council could decide to retain experts to evaluate what is the appropriate level for each permitted activity here in San Bruno, given the particular market conditions here. And I think what staff has concluded is, we don't really know what that appropriate level would be for whatever activity may or may not be permitted. All right, let's talk just a little more about a couple of other possible steps to put a ballot measure on. So one question we always ask ourselves is, should the city provide information to the community about a ballot measure? And the city has certainly done so in the last two successful ballot measures. We've held public meetings, staff presentations to the community, and mailers providing information. The other thing the city council may want to consider is the effect of a potential cannabis measure on a potential TOT tax measure. Sorry, that's a duplication of words. I apologize. I just saw that. TOT is transient occupancy tax. So on a potential TOT measure. And so that's one thing that we might want to get some elections consulting advice about to make sure that we don't have things working at cross purposes. So what would placing a potential ballot measure on cost? And there's really quite a variation here, and we apologize, it's difficult to sort of pin the numbers down because we don't really know what direction the city council would like staff to take. But here are some estimates. So we do know from past experience that polling costs about $30,000. So if you want to find out what the residents would like in terms of, or not in terms of cannabis activities, conducting a poll is one way to find that out, and that certainly costs some money. There's also a potential additional cost for election consulting that's separate, depending on what the ballot issue is. So, you know, and this goes back to the point we made earlier about possible conflict with a TOT measure. We might want to get some consulting advice about, is it a good idea to have, you know, two tax measures on a ballot potentially? You have in front of you in the staff report, sort of a report for comprehensive services by HDL. We reached out to them because they're one of the premier firms in the industry that knows a lot about cannabis and knows a lot about cannabis on the peninsula and, in particular, in San Mateo County. So we thought that would be a good place to start, just to get a general idea. So their services, as you saw, would include economic analysis, the ballot measure development, public meetings, and a variety of other services that would cost about $30,000 to retain them. There's a possibility that we'd have to do some SEQA and GIS work, which there's a wide range of costs depending on the measure. Somebody might ask, well, why do we have to do that? You know, how come we don't have to do that for other ballot measures? And the answer is that we do. It's just that other ballot measures, for example, tax-only measures or measures that do things like, you know, amend the municipal code, for example, if that were to be on the ballot. Many of those things don't require a SEQA analysis. But if the city council is going to direct staff to put a regulatory or zoning measure on the ballot, we would want to make sure that we have all of those things buttoned up. And the GIS services is likely going to be necessary to figure out if there are cannabis uses around other sensitive uses, sensitive land uses. So we need to do some mapping to figure out where those uses are, and if it's, you know, 500 feet away or 1,000 feet away or whatever, we'd need to determine that. So there may be some cost for that. We know from past experience that sending informational mailers cost about $8,000 a mailer. We know from the city clerk's office that election costs to add one measure to the ballot or one additional measure to the ballot is about $7,000 to $11,000. And we've also estimated that staff time would be about 50 to 150 hours of time, depending on what the ballot measure is. So why such a big range? And at the low end, that would be something for, you know, a very simple tax measure, for example, with no regulatory measure at all. On the higher end would be a more complicated tax measure and a regulatory measure because those are really cross-departmental efforts. In fact, all of them are. But I think there would be much more effort involved in putting on both a tax and a regulatory measure as well. If the city council decided only to put a regulatory measure on the ballot for whatever reason, the time would also be on the higher end of that because that's really what takes the most time, is coming up with an ordinance that the city is willing to live with for a long time until the voters decide otherwise. So let's take a couple of minutes and quickly summarize. So what's the timeline? The timeline is we have to get everything done and to the county by the 8th of August. That means a little less than 60 days, actually slightly more than 60 days, from today to perform all of the work, but before the July city council meeting, the second meeting in July. And so historically, what we've done is sort of to not push that August 8 deadline too close. We've had all of the work done and adopted by the city council by the second meeting in July. So we have a little less than 60 days to do that. And the result of that is that if the city council does want to proceed, that consultants, if they're authorized, and staff would be really required to immediately begin work on this. So moving toward the end, what are the next steps? So first off, we need to discuss whether or not to place some measure on the November 2020 ballot. Decide if so, whether it's a tax-only, tax and regulation, or regulation-only measure. Discuss whether to retain consultants to assist staff in performing the work. And discuss the source of funds for the work. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney. And what I think I'd like to do, in case folks want to comment, and then depart if they have something they need to do, I'd like to go ahead and open it to public comment first. So if you are interested, if you, and the city clerk will guide you, but if you would raise your hand in the form.
Take it down.
We have so far one hand up. Lex Lee, I'm going to bring you into the room, just one moment. All right, to unmute, just one moment. Hi, Lex Lee, can you hear us?
Yeah, this is actually Dan, Dan Coz.
Dan, okay.
I like Lexi, though.
That was the name that's listed, I don't know.
No, that's fine, that's actually her computer.
All right, Dan, you'll have three minutes, go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, so, you know, I appreciate the presentation, I thought it was very in-depth. The concern or the questions that I'd have, and, look, I'm all for raising general revenue for the city of San Bruno, but when I looked at the presentation, the problems that I saw was there is only one example of a city that has tried this that is non-legacy, and the numbers that we're looking at are abysmal. They're giving you numbers of $100,000 since January of 2019. So you're talking almost 18 months of revenue of less, approximately $100,000, and that's the number that they've supplied to us. So the problem that I foresee, beyond the fact that when you look at statistics, that's one out of eight cities that have poured all this money into getting this passed and approved, and that is a pretty lousy rate of success when I look at it. The second problem that I see is, when you look at the cities that have approved it, you've got the legacy city, Pacifica. And the reason that they're successful is obviously, as you said, they've had this legacy cannabis already in place. And also, you have to look at, you know, the location, it sort of has the same reputation as Santa Cruz, so that's understandable as to why it has been semi-successful. But then when you also look at South City, they're not successful, and you have to ask yourself, well, why is that? And why has it not translated into any revenue? So the problem that I foresee then is if we spend this money, which, just ballparking, looking at the numbers that you put out there, it's about $100,000, is, the first problem that I see is the location of San Bruno. If we were further down the peninsula, say, Redwood City, I could understand maybe we have a location advantage. We don't have that because the people that are going to go and get their cannabis are probably going to go to the legacy city, Pacifica, or they probably go to the established city, South San Francisco. So you got to ask yourself when you're looking at this, why would people necessarily buy cannabis from San Bruno? And why, what is going to make San Bruno stand out? Are we a destination city for cannabis? Do we have the reputation for cannabis like Santa Cruz or Pacifica? Do we have the beach access? I don't see us having any of that. So I'd hate to see us pour $100,000 into a proposition that is going to result in the revenue that South City is generating. So that's all I'm saying, is locations against us and the fact that you only have one city that is non-legacy, and in my opinion, it's a total failure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Just one moment.
Okay.
Next, we have Joshua Frum, bringing you in the room. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. I'm unmuting you now. Hi, Joshua, can you hear us?
Yeah, Melissa, it's Frum, F-R-U-N-D, Frum.
Okay, Frum, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Right, yeah, thank you for your time. Look, I just, as a San Bruno resident, I'll be quite forthright with you. I'm one of the millions of Californians who actually voted to recreationally legalize marijuana in this state. And I have been in San Bruno now for some time. I see the amazing potential that this city has to be at the forefront of something rather than behind something. I'm particularly passionate about this issue. Look, let me give you some of my own demographics to set the stage. I'm 39 years old, I have a family here, I have young kids that are going to be going to public schools here in San Bruno. I use cannabis recreationally, and I'm not ashamed of that. And frankly, the idea that cannabis is something that should be treated as different somehow than pretty much any other business that brings in tax revenue to the city, to me, seems a little ridiculous. As an adult who's paying taxes in this city, I want to see a business here that can thrive. You know, to the prior commenter, I would say that San Bruno absolutely can be a destination. I, right now, either get deliveries from San Francisco, so, San Francisco, you're welcome for my tax revenue, or San Jose, you're welcome for my tax revenue. San Bruno, not getting my tax revenue. And I'd be happy, gladly, to give my revenue to San Bruno. I'm also willing to invest in the idea of recreational cannabis in San Bruno. I'm also willing to invest in the idea of recreational cannabis in San Bruno, if it's done correctly, if it's done responsibly, if all of the things that need to happen so that, you know, our community thrives instead of is harmed by the potential for recreational cannabis. I just think there's a lot of opportunity here. And I'm really frustrated that it feels like we are stuck in this very outdated notion of what it means to be a San Bruno resident. Here in San Bruno, we have nothing but potential. We have the airport right next to us. There are people who fly to Colorado right now, get off the plane in Denver Airport, and go immediately to the nearest recreational cannabis facility. So why can't we do that? You know, the idea that Santa Cruz is, you know, somehow a destination, I mean, I understand it, but it doesn't have to be that way. There is so much opportunity here that I think we're not taking advantage of. I would really love to see this be on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Tim. So it might be Reyna, I'm not sure. Bringing them in. Tim, Reyna, can you hear me?
It's Tim, yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Just one moment. Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, hi, I like what Joshua had to say. I think this is an opportunity for San Bruno to benefit from this as a city, as a community. And we sell alcohol, cigarettes, same, you know, and we're benefiting from those taxes as well. So this is another way to benefit and quickly, and to improve our city. We're in a financial downfall, and our city could use this money to improve its downtown, its streets, et cetera. It could be a real home run here. So I encourage, highly encourage, recommend that this be on the ballot in 2020. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Tim, good night.
Just one moment. Next, we have Riley Gibbons. Riley, I'm bringing you in the room, just one moment. Hi, Riley, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, one, I'd like to heavily agree with what Josh said. It's a huge opportunity. And I forgot, for Lexi, you compared saying that South City, the numbers are obviously terrible. But if anyone did any research on the dispensary in South City, it's not the greatest, and their demographics cannot compare to San Bruno. It's the industrial city for a reason. It's not the biggest community. They don't have, you know, they don't have San Mateo Ave. They don't got the Bezos as much, you know. So what I'm saying is, I think it would be a great opportunity to open up at least one or two shops in San Bruno and do what Pacifica did, making a deal on the tax. Like, here we could start off at 7.5. Depending how well it does or how bad it does, you increase it or decrease it. And you ought to think of the demographics of Pacifica as well. It's beach, everyone's going there to relax. If there's a club down the street near Rockaway Beach, it's super convenient. There's no clubs anywhere south of San Francisco or north of San Jose. So this is a huge, besides Pacifica, obviously. But there's only a small handful. And for them to pull in $500,000 in a year just for only four dispensaries is huge. If we threw in at least a couple in San Bruno, we're getting all the sister cities that have to travel all the way to San Jose, all the way to San Francisco. They're paying super tax dollar on the deliveries, like 30% on top, that it's almost a given opportunity that we can pull in so much more money for the city. And then the 85 deliveries that you mentioned in the PowerPoint, I actually know where those come from. They're the mobile dispensaries that are, that you basically have to own, like an office space to run out of. And if anyone's familiar with Weed Maps, put in your zip code on Weed Maps and you'll see how many dispensaries there are. San Bruno, there's like 30. Millbrae, there's probably like 40. Better Brilliant Games, South City, it's the same amount of numbers. So I think it would be a completely missed opportunity to not at least consider putting it on. I know it's a good amount of money that the city could use. But, you know, you invest it properly, it should be a great turnaround. And I've been a part of a legal farm for the past four years in Mendocino. And last year, we pulled in $3 million harvest. So if, and our plan is to actually become our own manufacturer. So there's no middleman. We're not needing to put those extremely high numbers and open up a shop. That's the main goal. So it would be great for the city to consider this, or it would be extremely beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, Reyna.
Just one moment. Next is, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this wrong, Vipul Dayal. One moment, trying to unmute you.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, hello, Michelle.
Yeah, hi, this is Vipul. It's pronounced like people, but with a V, Vipul.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no worries. So my name is Vipul Dayal. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, District City Council members and staff. My name is Vipul, and my family has owned the Days Inn, or formerly Days Inn, now it's Hotel 1550 here in San Bruno, since July 2006. We currently have about eight hotels in our portfolio. My wife and I are about to start our 15th business this year, which is a daycare. We also have our own 501(c)(3) charity. As well as, we also own 25% of a cannabis delivery company that's headquartered out of San Diego. And so to me, you know, this decision is simple. We should take this as a business decision, which means, I mean like a ROI type decision, like return on investment. To me, why not spend X in order to get two, three, four times more down the line? So the first thing I want to discuss is the taxes that the revenue that San Diego, that we give to San Diego. We usually average about $25,000 to $35,000 a month in taxes that we give to the city of San Diego. Now, now keep in mind that the city of San Diego limits its dispensary licenses to only 40. So we are just one out of 40 that gives that, you know, gives that money to the city. I think we could get Pacifica-type numbers. And I say that because if approved, you know, there's no other cities besides South San Francisco that's around us. And we could get all those revenues from those cities, those surrounding cities into San Bruno. And the second point I want to make is that, you know, as Joshua mentioned, San Bruno is close to, you know, it's close to the airport. To me, I know that tourism will go up, which means answering money, like TOT money, the city will get. I can see restaurant sales going up. You know, what I envision happening is that people are going to get off the airport, they're going to stop off at San Bruno, they're going to pick up their stuff, and then they're going to go to wherever their destination is, right? And then the third thing, probably the most important thing that I want to mention is, look, it's, the fact is that the city is going to lose some businesses after COVID. It's a fact, it's going to happen all over, right? Which means loss of revenue for the city. So why not, and the question that we need to ask is, why would a city not want to have a business that is recession-proof? Our sales went up in March and April, just to give you, just to give you an example. So I'm all for the study, all for, sorry, to put the ballot in November. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Just one moment. Next, we have Oros Harmon. Oros, I'm bringing you in, just one moment. Might be Plymouth, too, I'm sorry. Hi, Oros.
Hello. Hey.
Whenever you're ready.
I think people have already said most of what I, what I would say. I mean, it just, it seems absurd that, you know, you can have a tobacconist shop and you can't have a head shop. You know, I don't even use myself, but I voted in favor of decriminalization of recreational use. You know, it's a, it's a choice that adults make. I think, as people have said, given our position near the airport, it's completely plausible that people who don't want to fly with it because of recreational restrictions, the restrictions on the federal level, are going to stop off here to grab a little to use while they're visiting. You know, for somebody's coming in for even a business meeting, they want to take the edge off in the evening, the same way somebody else might have a drink. So, you know, like, it just seems completely silly. And to suggest, it's like, you know, the $100,000 of revenue in 18 months, well, I mean, how much tax revenue do you get from one liquor store or one tobacconist? I think it's completely reasonable for us to start small. You know, license one or two businesses in town. Maybe allow for one or two research businesses or production businesses as well. You know, we can, we can limit it, and we can always revisit that later. We can write the ballot measure to allow the city council to make that kind of determination if we want to further loosen restrictions later. And, you know, start something up, see how it goes for a few years. I think that just diversifying our revenue streams makes sense. So I hope this will be on the ballot this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Oros.
One moment. Okay, next, we have Quentin J. Just one moment while I unmute you. Quentin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Quentin J. I own the wine and spirit shop in Millbrae, Bacchus Wine and Spirits, located inside of Patey Meat Company. I've been in the community for, well, the shop's been open about for six years and then probably in the community about for 10, living here in this local area. And I think that one of the things that people need to, you know, that I think people respect about the shop is that, you know, how responsible we are in, you know, in working with the ABC, which is the same organization that, you know, that administers cannabis for the state. So I think finding people who are sort of responsible and partners, sort of people that are in the community, I think is very, very important, because I think that's part of, you know, part of the overall fabric. I'm definitely a believer that, you know, in one of my trips to Colorado, I was just amazed by some of the statistics and numbers about the travel and how, you know, how close we are to the airport, both Millbrae and definitely San Bruno, and how there's a lot of sort of, you know, people that are traveling in and out, back and forth, that could be potential customers. So, you know, and it's something that I would personally, you know, invest my money into as a business here in San Bruno. So that's why I'm joining this, the city council meeting, and just wanting to understand a little bit more about it. And I think having it on the referendum in November would be great, because then the people could decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Quentin.
Just one moment. Next is Tom Hamilton. Tom, can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. I just, I wanted to echo, most of what I want to say has been, has been said already. So I'll just hit the points that haven't been. San Bruno is much easier to reach from neighboring cities than Pacifica is, to counter a point from earlier. We've got two major freeways running through, plus the airport, plus mass transit adjacent to our downtown. So it's going to drive a lot of traffic for folks who would be driving up the peninsula to San Francisco or making a left to go over the hill to Pacifica. I echo Mr. Frum's wish that San Bruno be a leader on this issue rather than a follower. In the, in the packet and in the presentation, I questioned why the SEQA analysis would be needed upfront. Isn't that something that you would do once a potential applicant selects a site? Because you can't do a SEQA analysis unless you know where you're going to do it. That fee is likely something that we could recoup from the applicant, either partially or perhaps even in full. So it's, it didn't seem appropriate to have that fee be part of the, this is how much it's going to cost to get on the ballot, number. Lastly, even if we were to match the most conservative estimates coming out of Pacifica at $300,000 a year, and likely we would poach some of Pacifica's revenue because of, just because of geography. $300,000 a year, that's two, that's two police officers. We just, we just talked about in the budget about having to defer the hiring of four police officers in San Bruno. $300K a year would pay for two. So I would really highly recommend that we put this on the ballot, let the voters decide, and not leave all of this, all of this tax revenue on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
One moment. Next, we have Stephen Seymour. It might be Sandra, so just one moment. Hi, Stephen or Sandra, can you hear me?
Yes, it's Sandra.
Hello.
Hi, I have spoken many, many times in front of city council on this very topic. And I have talked to the mayor, the council members. And it keeps going back to one thing to me, not about the potential of making or not making money. It seems to me it's more about three people on council who just don't want to see it go through. We've been here before, and the last vote was Mayor Rico Medina, council members Laura Davis and Michael Salazar. So they just didn't want it. They did, you know, pretty much, the mayor said he really didn't care, that this is a kind of city, that it's not about money, that we're not those kind of people. Well, what kind of people do you think we are? I'm a daily user, and I'm pretty active in my community. So I find that truly, truly insulting that we're treated like second-class citizens. I mean, comparing Pacifica to Santa Cruz, I mean, what does that really say? That they're different or less than us? I don't think so. And I've also, and thank you to other people who've spoken, we are right next to the airport. You know, it seems like this is always set up to fail, not to succeed. So why didn't we look at how much San Francisco is making? How come we didn't look at what Oakland is making? And please, if there is a dispensary in South City, let me know about it, because I will start going there if we don't get one here. Right now, I'm going to San Francisco at Elevated SF. And so I just really think if we had a positive attitude and just said, let's try something new, I saw that it took no time to get that liquor locker that was going to open up until COVID hit. And we shouldn't have to go outside of our city for a legal product. I mean, you, the people on council, you have the luxury of going into Bevmo or anywhere you want and walking out with your case with your children hand in hand, where they can run off and pick up a bottle off the shelf. You don't get to just walk into a dispensary. Your IDs are checked. And the idea, and I heard this saying, you go, what kind of people is it going to bring here? What kind of garbage is it going to bring? Well, you know, last time I checked at the 7-Eleven, that wasn't looking very well. And that doesn't seem to rise to your concern. So it would just be interesting that, you know, maybe a positive attitude. I mean, we couldn't have the pride flag this year. And, yeah, I think if the staff needs to put in more time, yeah, go. What else is the staff for? They are on a salary, right? So why shouldn't they be working towards the city? Let's give people a chance to raise the city up a little bit more. And we do have things to attract. We have beautiful parks. We have a downtown that could be so much more if it just receives some support from the city as far as cleaning it up. We can do so much better. It's this low expectation of ourselves that really, really bothers me. So maybe, you know, we are voting for council and mayor this November, so we have to vote and see who will move this city forward. Thank you.
And I also want to speak.
Thank you, Sandra.
Steve wants to speak as well.
Okay. Hold on, Stephen, let city clerk set it, and she'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Now, I'll tell you what, there is no retail space in South San Francisco. All that South San Francisco has is delivery. So you can't measure South San Francisco, shouldn't even be on the slides. Mark talked about 85 distributors. 85 distributors shows that there is a need in San Bruno. And you had a couple of speakers, I think Josh talked about how he gets delivery. We're giving our tax dollars to someone else. You talk about where could this be put when you're looking at regulations? I mean, there's a great place across from Golden Gate Cemetery. It wouldn't be near any schools, there's commercial space, and there's parking. I just ran a poll on Nextdoor. There's 238 votes, and 67% say they want to see a dispensary in San Bruno. That mirrors slightly lower, but still around that 70% mark of the people who voted to legalize cannabis in San Bruno. And it should be the people who make that decision, not the five people sitting on council. Vipul talked about TOT and restaurants. So really, if you were looking at a study that would be all-inclusive, you wouldn't just be looking at what cannabis would bring you and weigh that against what it would cost you to put it on the ballot. You would be looking at what will this bring to our hotels? What will this bring to our restaurants? We have open spaces on San Mateo Avenue. I'm sure there would be lots of people who'd like to put up a restaurant.
I'm sure there would be lots of people who'd like to put up a restaurant and become a taxpayer, a commercial taxpayer in San Bruno if there were people coming here and we are sitting next to the airport. That's been mentioned many a time. In the slides that Mark gave, not only did he bring up the sequel, but he talked about the hours of staff time. And I could be wrong, but I thought there was a figure applied to that. Uh, we're already paying our staff. Uh, we have declining taxes now. We're talking about being 8.4 million dollars behind in revenue. And you're looking at ways to, uh, take away or, or to reduce services so that we can balance the budget. We have a recession-proof business here. Uh, uh, Vipal brought that up, Veepal brought that up. He's a businessman. He's been in this business for a long while. $35,000 being brought to San Diego every month is pretty substantial. Um, this could also ignite a return of, uh, the tax money to all of the businesses. Why would somebody just stay in a hotel and eat at a restaurant? They might also shop here as well. And I agree with what, uh, Arlo said, we need to diversify where our money's coming from. We're spending too much time thinking about development. This is a huge place that can bring money. You're going to put TOT tax on the ballot, that's going to bring in about 400,000. This is going to bring in more than that. Uh, and then lastly, I say, let the people decide. Uh, this is an election year and we do live in a democracy and it needs to go on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other hands, Melissa?
Yes, actually, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbons, you only are given one chance to speak, so I'm going to lower your hand. And there are no more hands raised, mayor.
Thank you. All right, so we'll bring it, uh, back to the council for questions, um, for staff. And at this point, we'll leave it here at the council, so any folks, get my screen up. Um, any folks that have questions or comments? Linda, thank you.
So, um, I have some questions.
Yeah.
Um, in the staff report. For the, um, I don't know, Mark, if it's, Mark, do you mind, should I refer to the page or what's, what's easiest for you?
Sure, I have, I have the staff report in front of me.
Okay, so page three of six. Um, of the, um, the 2.5 to 10%, you mentioned that, um, it can even go higher than 10%. But within the 2.5% to 10%, would, um, would the city council, would that be, let's say if this moves forward tonight, um, would the consultant come back to us with a recommendation on what that tax should be?
Uh, well, the, yeah, the short answer is yes, if you authorize the city to retain the consultant, obviously, then part of the consultant's work would be to recommend what would the right level of tax be for what particular commercial activities the city council is either deciding to allow or going to put on the ballot for the public to decide, uh, to allow.
Okay. Um, and then for San Mateo, for the, the, the locations that have all decided to pass of the eight cities, um, you mentioned that really only two are making money, Pacifica and it sounds like some in South City. Um, when, when were those effective?
Uh, so that's.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm not 100% sure about Pacifica. Uh, I can look it up, um, just if we, if you give me a minute or two. I think South San Francisco was effective in, in, before January of 2019 because the information that the finance department received from the city said that they had received about, or less than $100,000 since January of 2019. So I, I can take a look and see when Pacifica was, uh, was put on. Just give me a second.
That'd be great because I, I read the ICMA report that you quote and it says that they had estimated $450,000. So I'm curious, it, it looks like they're on track with their estimate at this point, if it was approved in like the last year to two years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason, I'm, I'm not finding that, the answer to that question immediately. Um, why don't you give me a couple of minutes and then, well, see it looks like. So what I, what I have is a resolution putting the measure on the ballot on November 7, 2017.
Okay. So probably effective in 18?
Right, I, I'm guessing that offhand without double checking.
Okay, so, but yeah, I mean, I think it's a decent return based on the study that, that ICMA provided. Um, I wanted to also ask, um, hold on, I'm looking at my notes. Oh, same, same question with South San Francisco, so they're at less than 100,000, but could that be because it's also, it's, from what I saw, it's also recently been passed? I don't think it's that long since South City approved cannabis?
Uh, let's take a quick look here. I don't know that I have a date. Um, Darcy may know from the research that her department did on that. I don't see a date offhand on the spreadsheet that they prepared. But we know that the numbers were as of January of 2019.
Okay. Because I, I mean, the reason I bring that up is I, I would imagine that if you're established, um, then obviously you're going to make some money upfront, but if you're not established, you do have to build a business. So I'm not sure if either, if anybody has any expertise in this area, but I, I would be curious to know that.
So, uh, Darcy, looks like she's confirmed that it was effective January of 2019.
Okay, so I mean, so you, so both, both, both cities, both cities have, have already realized their investment on consultants? Is that, is $100,000 the average on a consultant?
Uh, we don't know what those other cities spent.
Okay, okay, great. Um, my other question is, okay, so under, on page four of six in the staff report, it's, um, right after the ICMA quote, you refer to the city retaining a consultant such as HDL to determine whether San Bruno could expect to realize revenue from commercial cannabis activities and if so, when and how much. Um, what, what would happen if the city didn't hire a consulting company? What would be the alternative to that?
Well, I guess there's a couple of ways to answer that question. The alternative would be that the city would not, or the city council would not have information regarding how to appropriately craft a ballot measure. I think that's the simplest answer. And so, uh, we would be, in essence, flying blind to determine what, what to put on the ballot, what should the taxes be, uh, what should the regulatory issues be? Staff would either have to determine that all itself, but would certainly seek direction from you, the city council, about what those, what those measures, uh, could, could be.
Is it possible to move forward, I guess anything's possible, but to provide staff with really the information that you need? Is it possible to move forward with a consult, consultant, but not with the polling? Because the polling was estimated, I believe, at $30,000?
Right, well, I, I think you partially answered the question, you know, we'll, we'll do how, whatever the city council directs. And if the city council indicates that they don't want to conduct polling to determine, uh, what the, what the public, uh, is or what the voting public may be interested in doing, we can certainly not do that. But then it would be up to the city council to direct staff about what to place on the ballot uh, with respect to a regulatory measure and with respect to a tax measure. The polling is just an information, is information for the city council in developing that measure that gives it a, uh, greater likelihood of success.
Okay, but you, but the consult, but we're, we, if we had the consultants, we could actually have the consultants provide a recommendation without doing the polling? Is what I want to make sure is possible.
Yes, that is possible. Uh, what the polling does is it polls likely voters and so it provides, provides information for the city council in crafting an ordinance that may be accepted by San Bruno voters. Uh, an option is to not do polling. Uh, it, it is totally optional, uh, and the city council can provide direction. Um, or, um, ask, uh, we, we could ask the consultant for their advice. Um, they would be informed by their expertise and what they find in other cities. What they would not be informed of and, and really the only way to find out, uh, what likely voters, uh, would accept is a, uh, typical voter poll that we've done before.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all, those are the questions I have for now. I have a comment, but I'll make the comment after the rest of the council asks their questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Marty?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, uh, thanks for this information. Um, my very first question is, um, what needs to be done now? And what could wait for after the election? Um, and tied into that question is, um, it's my understanding from the staff report that it gets a lot more complicated if we're going to try to put a, a regulatory ballot measure on the ballot instead of just the tax rate measure. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and in doing so, the cost of putting it on the ballot measure would be significantly less.
So the.
You wouldn't have to do the, uh, SEQA, you wouldn't have to do the GIS. Um, Councilmember Mason brought up the idea potentially of not doing the polling, which would save a third of the cost. Um, we could look into, um, possibly not doing the mailer. Is there another way that we could, um, rely on those, uh, residents or some, some, uh, third party to, uh, step up to the plate and, and push, um, this forward to reduce the cost to the city? So in comparing the cost of just a tax rate measure, can we, can I hear from staff of what, if it's true that that cost would go down by approximately? And getting rid, getting rid of the polling, that would reduce the cost by at least 55,000?
Uh, well, I think in essence that's correct. So, um, if you don't do polling, that saves the amount for polling. If you do only a tax measure and not a regulatory measure, that saves the sequel costs and it also saves a portion of the consultant costs, not all of the consultant costs. Uh, because we'll still need some assistance with determining what's the, what's the right tax measure. Um, so that, and if you don't do a mailer, then there's no cost for doing a mailer. That's true.
Right, so with, with that reduction in the cost of the measure and, and, and I bring in a cost because we are facing a financial, uh, 8.1, 8.2 million dollar shortfall coming up next year. Um, I can't remember which commenter mentioned that we're likely going to lose a couple of businesses due to COVID and we're going to have, uh, even a, a greater hole. Um, I did do a little research on what Pacifica did. Um, they passed ballot measure in 2017 with 78% of the vote. They did, as the, the staff report mentions, they were able to pass the, uh, put on the ballot measure with some flexibility to raise or lower the tax rate based on the market conditions, which, which I think is, is really, um, what I would want to have here. And I would ask the consultant who's going to be preparing, preparing this to, you don't need to copy it word from word, but, but that's kind of the, that's the direction or that's the feeling that if it passed at 78% of Pacifica, that's kind of like the, uh, that's amazing that, that it, it hit those numbers and that, um, having that flexibility would be beneficial, um, to getting this to pass. Uh, Pacifica is similar to San Bruno in population. In my notes here, uh, they have around 38,000, uh, we have almost 43,000. Their per capita is $52,000 a year. Ours is $71,000 a year. And there is no city in the Bay Area that is in better proximity to the airport, to hotels, to mass transit than San Bruno. And, um, those travelers that are, that would come to our city, and I believe it, they're, they're worried about carrying cannabis on them when, when they're flying because it's still a federal, uh, it's a federal, uh, it's illegal federally. Um, and they're going to come off, they're going to get their Uber or they're going to get their rental car, they're going to get on BART and they're going to look for their spot to, to secure their cannabis. And when they do that, they're likely to, to come downtown, have something to eat, um, and relax. Um, that's one of the things that we need. Um, so for people that are saying like, people are going to go to Pacifica instead or they're going to go to Santa Cruz, they're already going to go to Santa Cruz. But pretty much everybody else, in my opinion only, when they get off that plane and they, they're looking for cannabis, they're going to go to the closest location and that will be in San Bruno. Um, I heard that, and it's not really clear, is there a cannabis dispensary? I looked on, uh, this, uh, app here and it doesn't seem like there is a cannabis, uh, dispensary. So maybe those numbers are way off because of that. Um, and I guess, I guess, I guess this is, this is how I feel, right? The most important decisions should be left to the democratic process, right, democracy? That all voters get to decide this. We put it on the ballot. I'm aware of the financial difficulties, difficulties that we're in right now, but you have to invest some money to get a return. Um, I understand some other council members may have some moral issue and I respect that. What you believe should be in for your family is great. This is an opportunity to let the voters decide. It's not up to me. I didn't run to become a council member to, to say, I'm the cannabis candidate, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote this way. None of us did. We're looking out for the best of the city and I think it's always best to let the voters decide. I'll reserve my comments till I hear from my others, uh, colleagues, so thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments from colleagues? Okay, seeing none?
So, uh, Rico, sorry, I, I have a, I have something I'll say if there's no other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, ultimately this council is well aware of our $8 million deficit, uh, painfully aware, I think. Um, every meeting since about February has reminded us that development and Measure G advertised to predominantly go to repave, street repair are, are lifeline. This means that with an $8 million deficit, we limit our choices and our ability to truly develop thoughtfully. And not because a project may be best for the community, but because it's all the revenue and all the money that we're likely to get. Out of desperation for funds, uh, to keep those services and staff moving. If we want flexibility in decisions, we need flexibility in our revenue sources. As a mother of two children, I fully understand the concerns around cannabis in our city. With that said, I also understand that without funds, our children may lose access to quality services through the city via park and rec, library, law enforcement, and our seniors could lose access to very important pivotal sources and of services that are currently available in San Bruno. Funds are desperately needed in our city. We have the ability to manage the number of dispensaries to one or two and we further have the ability to manage the location in which they're placed. While we have discussed TOT, occupancy tax, Measure K as a full council, we are waiting. And I support and advocated for all of these measures, as I believe most of the council members here have. We ultimately may not see large revenues, but we will not know without trying. And that's where the city has missed opportunities. It's through a fear of trying something different. We really, really need this revenue. We have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible. While other areas of revenue may be coming before, at a later time, um, this is before us right now, this moment. With the economy where it is, we may not see this item revisited. I encourage all of us to move forward with this item, knowing that our city needs the revenue in order to allow the city more than one, maybe two lifelines to get out of our $8 million deficit and ensure that we have done everything in our power to ensure services for residents remain intact, especially as we potentially go into a recession. And remember, all we're saying is let the people decide. Let our city decide whether they want to welcome cannabis. Let democracy make this decision. After all, ultimately, it is our residents who stand to gain or lose the most from this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. All right, just before I go, Michael, Laura, you're good for now? Michael, good? Okay.
I don't have any questions on the report.
Okay. Lauren, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I have a few questions on the report. I guess so, we heard some comments about South City not having a dispensary. So is there any, does anybody have any answers on who does have a dispensary that's open? My understanding is San Carlos does not? Just because it has them?
San Carlos does not have an open dispensary. The only place that we're sure about that has open dispensaries is Pacifica. The information we got from South San Francisco was what they, they allowed them, I think one of the public speakers indicated that there is an open dispensary there. We haven't independently verified that. What we do know is that the revenue from the activities that they permitted is what's as reported in the staff report.
And then going back to the SEQA comment, I guess the question was raised about why now? Why can't that be later on? And is there any cost that can be incurred by applicants?
So to answer the first question, the reason why the city has to do a SEQA analysis is there's a case that says that when a city puts a ballot measure on, they're required to do SEQA. So I think the question was a good one, which is why can't we just wait until after an applicant decides where they're going to go? And the answer to that is because the ballot measure itself is the discretionary act by the city council to place a matter on the ballot. And so that's why SEQA is required at that time. Most regulatory measures, as I think some of you have talked about, would include some zoning. It can be here, it can be there, it can be one, it can be two, it can be more. So those are all questions that would have to be evaluated with a SEQA analysis before the ballot measure goes on.
Just to reply to your first question, it appears online that South San Francisco does not have a location, but they do have a adult use non-storefront location that is licensed. So that may be the delivery business that has a San Francisco address that is providing that revenue.
You're muted, Laura.
What are the federal implications of putting something like this in the ballot for the same, City of San Bruno? We got, sorry, phones are going off.
That's all right. So you know, that's a hard question to answer, except to note that other cities have placed these ballot measures on without, you know, any obvious attention by the federal government. I think it's really not a question of what the, what is any potential liability to the city. It really affects whether the businesses will begin operation to begin with. And there's certainly information that we've received from our experts that indicates that one of the barriers to entry for new businesses in places where the businesses have not previously been before is that it, because it's still illegal under federal law, landlords may be reluctant to rent to those individuals and there may be other barriers like we mentioned, banking and other sorts of things that make these kinds of commercial transactions more difficult than a liquor store or a tobacco store, those sorts of things which are allowed by both state and federal law.
Laura? Laura, are you done?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth trying to read my notes too.
Okay.
You know, the one thing that I didn't hear and I remember running for city council and one of the things, and I think in everybody's literature, they're going to say, they're going to talk about keeping the city safe, right? You know, you want to have our city protected. And we don't know anything about crime. I mean, what sort of crime dispensaries bring? Home deliveries are a completely different thing. You can allow somebody to deliver something to home, but opening it up storefront and wherever it may be located, let's say, I don't know, say it's in Bay Hill, right? What sort of crime gets brought to the area because of dispensaries? And so there wasn't really much, there wasn't anything about that on the presentation. And so that's hard to kind of make these decisions to say, well, let's let the voters vote for it. And if it wins, if it passes, it's coming through and now we've opened up a situation that's concerning. For a lot of personal reasons, I have a lot of concerns. But the one thing I will say is that I don't in any way, shape or form have anything about anybody using it. In fact, I have friends, I have family that do. And for some people, a good friend, it's what gets them through with a lot of aches and pains. So please, for anybody who thinks that I'm against it, what I have a hard time with is, and somebody said, well, you know, shouldn't be about council members who don't want to vote for that. Well, we make a lot of decisions in San Bruno that truly on the betterment of the community. Somebody indicated about a poll on Nextdoor. Well, I mean, I can, I can reach out to 50 of my friends and one person's on Nextdoor because it's a frustrating application and for many reasons, they don't time for it. So although the poll is good and the feedback is good, it isn't a really good representation of our community. And so polling our community has to be a requirement if we wanted to move forward with this. And I don't think you can spend the money and then all those things that you just talked about, well, landlords won't allow them in. They can't get the funding for it. You name, you name the list. We spent all this money upfront and we can't recoup any sales tax. And the other thing I have a hard time with is, I remember there's two things. Number one is, are we doing this for the revenues? Or are we doing this to provide a service to the residents? And it may not be residents, it may be visitors, right? You fly into San Francisco and, you know, I need to get some stuff because I couldn't fly with it. So I'm going to drop into San Bruno and pick some up. You know, years ago, we thought BART was coming in. What a great service and what a great thing. And yet we had to have cops at San, at Tampa and at BART because of the crime that occurs. So we spent a little money and we spent more money. So are those costs really outweighing? For me, it's not about the revenues. It's truly about if I want to provide this service in San Bruno. And we lost potential with great grocery store, Whole Foods in San Bruno. That would have been brought in so much money. But we need to move on. So the question tonight is whether or not we should allow the voters to put this on, city council to put this on the ballot. And, you know, that's a difficult thing with outrightly a lot of information. I mean, I'm disappointed that staff had to spend the amount of hours up to this point on this today during a period of time of unprecedented times in San Bruno. And they just continue. I mean, the amount of things that businesses are going through today, dealing with the riots, you have no idea. And until you work in a business all day long and deal with what's going on, you don't understand. We, and I, and so the staff, I'm sorry and I feel what you're going through and I understand the pain. We have priorities in this town and this is not the time. You want to bring this on at a time that maybe we can feel better about it and we can focus on the things that are a priority? I'm sorry, this cannot be a priority for right now. Call me out, call me names, I don't care. But at the end of the day, we have to run a city, every aspect of our city. And our city attorney and our city manager should be focusing on the important things of our city. And you know what that is? It's keeping our residents safe. It's making sure that my kids come home at night and they can put, they can rest their head in the pillow. Because to those who are listening today, many cities average one death a week for overdose. We have a fentanyl crisis on our hands. Let's focus on that. Let's show up. Let's go and pick it. Let's go up and stand out there and tell our families to make sure they're watching out what our kids are buying. I have a hard time with that. And when I hear the stories after stories, all these things, let's focus on the priorities. There's too many things to focus on right now. We'll get to this. There'll become a time that I think we can put the time into it, but tonight, today is not it. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify with our city attorney that the GIS and SEQA is required if you're putting a regulatory ballot measure on.
That's correct.
So if you, if it's just the tax side of the things, then you don't need to do that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a big difference in the cost. And Councilmember Davis, I, I feel your, I hear you. And it's my understanding that we do need four votes on this. So we could probably, once we hear it from the mayor and Councilman Salazar, we'll be able to get on and move on and figure this out real quick. So right on, thank you.
Linda, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I just want to say that I too was concerned about public safety. So I went ahead and researched it on my own. It's included in the ICMA report that the staff did refer to. And it does say here that the police chief in Pacifica noted that previous illegal businesses avoided reporting burglaries and other crimes against their property for fear of exposing themselves. Now they meet local safety standards and enjoy added protection from the police department, which hasn't seen any significant increase in the calls for service. Goes on to say that complementing these anecdotal reports from city administrators, the Washington State Institute for Public Policy provides statistics on several types of crime in the state since the legalization of recreational cannabis. Arrests for drug or narcotic violations decreased by 15% in 2002. Incidents or investigations, whether resulting in an arrest or not, identified as marijuana related decreased by 63% from 2012 to 2015. Drug only driving under the influence arrests, which do not differentiate marijuana from other drugs, decreased by about a third to approximately 1,200 for 2015. Among drivers involved in a traffic fatality who are tested for drugs or alcohol, there have been no significant growth or decline in those testing positive for marijuana alone or in combination with other drugs or alcohol. So that comes from the same report that staff did cite in their, in their staff report tonight that was done by ICMA. And I also want to thank staff for taking the time to invest in themselves. We are hearing cuts across the board in salaries that are happening across the state as Governor Newsom has already announced. I think that this is one more way again that we diversify our revenue. We must think about outside the box thinking. We cannot solely be dependent on developments because we need to have, again, thoughtful development. We need to be able to say a development doesn't fit in a certain area or a character of a development doesn't exist and not worry that if we say no, that we don't get money and we are going to have to cut more services. We've got to find more ways to get revenue. And again, we are not saying here, yes, as a council, we're making a decision on behalf of the city. We're saying, thank you staff for spending 75 hours on this. Thank you for your investment. We're going to put that time and that money and those resources to good use and let the community decide. Because by voting no tonight, those 75 hours really do mean absolutely nothing. Thank you.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. Michael, unless you want to go else? Can I go with my questions?
Go ahead and ask your questions.
All right. I think any times council directs staff to invest their time in something, nothing's a waste of time because they produced a product. That's my opinion, Linda. I just think that we give them credit for the time and the report and the work that they brought forward to us as was requested. My question is on the tax, Mark, on the tax item, you had, you had made the statement or in the staff presentation, staff time is 50 to 150 hours. But I believe that was more of a regulatory. If it is just the tax, then what are those hours potentially to staff?
So I'll answer that in two ways. I thought it would take less time for staff in total collectively to prepare this report than it actually did. So I mentally estimated less time than it actually did take. I think the 50 hours, the low end of that is for a tax measure. There's still a lot of things that need to be done in order to figure that out. But really, a lot of that depends on your direction. So right now, when the city council is talking about, let's put a measure on the ballot, it's still really not clear, I think, what is that measure going to be and how are we going to determine what it is? That's the work that needs to be done. So, and that's the work that the consultant would do. And so we really, until we know and have some direction from the city council, it's just really hard to estimate.
Okay. There was a, there was some comments made. I appreciate those folks from public with their input. Thank you. I want to go back to one that was made as far as just the history, which was made in the staff report, that in October, the council, and back then it was, Linda was not on at that time, but the rest of the, the other four of us were. And we voted to have a moratorium on cannabis in the City of San Bruno. All of us, exceptionally. And that was again, because the state, whatever was going to happen with them on January 1st, we didn't want to be under what their rules were. We wanted to be able to establish our own. So I just wanted to clear that up because there was reference made that it was three. We don't care and we're insulting folks. You know, like I said, that's just to go back into the history of how we're here and why we did that ban. So Mark, if it was, if it was for the tax initiative, you're saying there is no SEQA. Staff time could be 50 hours or more. It depends if council wants or directs as far as a mailer. Does the council want polling? So really, I'm still seeing a potential of, what, 37, even if you just did the polling and you did, I'm sorry, oh, the polling and the election at the low end. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, I think there's also the question, if it is just a tax measure, does the city council want to utilize a consultant to help formulate what the tax level should be? I mean, one of the things that comes to mind is if the city council has an idea of the type of revenue or the amount of revenue that they would like to generate, that's going to require some analysis. We would also need to truly understand the market here. I think it's been mentioned a number of times that our proximity to the airport may make San Bruno an excellent location for a cannabis dispensary. A consultant may have information on that. Also because of the advent of deliveries, it is also quite possible that people would go to their destination and have the cannabis delivered at their destination, their hotel room, wherever they're staying. And so the sort of impact of our location and proximity to the airport would be something that we would want to vet with a consultant that has worked with other cities. So we can really provide you with information on sort of what level of taxation would be appropriate for the amount of revenue that we would like to generate. As well as understanding what level of taxation would be appropriate for a city like ours to attract a cannabis business, given the dynamics of there's already a 22% tax at the state level. And so if we go to 10% at a 32% tax rate, would that attract a business or should we be lower than that? And frankly, how much lower would be possible if we really want to be successful in attracting a business?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, add on to that. You know, this has been a very sort of perplexing topic to write about and to consider because we thought there would be a lot of data and it turns out there actually is virtually no data. We really only have one data point, which is the City of Pacifica. And, you know, we, it looks like there's a sort of a business in South San Francisco. They're near the airport. They don't, there doesn't seem to be anybody rushing into South San Francisco to open up a cannabis dispensary. So it's really difficult for staff to give you, without some sort of expert information, to give you some sense of whether, from a revenue standpoint, this is really likely to be successful at all. And if so, when? And that's the thing that I think we're struggling with on a staff level. I know that the finance director, community development director, we were all on the phone with a consultant. We spent a lot of time on, you know, talking with him about these issues. And, you know, the consultant indicated that for a city the size of San Bruno, there might be two dispensaries. But it's not really clear whether, why the city would support two dispensaries if South San Francisco, right next door, which is just as close to the airport, supports, you know, no dispensaries. So these are issues that are really difficult and it's just hard to provide good, solid information when we really only have one data point that isn't applicable really at all to the City of San Bruno or to cities that are on the peninsula. So I just wanted to express our, you know, frustration about how difficult it was for us to bring you a report that gives you the information that you need. But we really don't have a lot of information to share other than what's in the report. And sort of speculation even from the consultant about what might or might not occur in the City of San Bruno if a measure were to pass and then if the city council were to allow certain kinds of businesses. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, and then Linda, I see your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so if this was taxed, the, and there was revenue generated, that revenue, from what I've read, can be that revenue, from what I've read, can be, is it treated like, almost like the general fund? It could be applied to anything? Because I've read cities who have used it to fund childcare. I've seen some of it go towards, I believe, law enforcement. Are there any limitations on that revenue?
Sure. In general, any tax measure that's put on the ballot for general purposes requires a 50% or 50-plus-one percent majority of the voters to adopt. If it is to be dedicated to a specific service, that requires a 2/3 majority of voters. So, that's really a decision for council, whether you want it to be general or special-purpose revenue.
And can I ask one more question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In your research, did you find any cities that have actually reported a loss?
No, but I'll confess that we didn't go beyond the peninsula. So, and I don't exactly know what a loss would mean. So, we didn't, for example, it would take probably hundreds of hours of research to figure out, how much did a city spend on staff time and consultants to put something on the ballot, and then it turns out they didn't get any revenue whatsoever? I mean, we know that some cities on the peninsula did that. They spent a bunch of time and money to put things on the ballot, and they don't have any revenue. So, we don't know if that's a loss, or we don't know if they're expecting revenue in the future. It's, we just couldn't go that deeply into the information. And much of that requires staff at those cities to get back to us during a time when they're overwhelmed, both with COVID and the pandemic, that, for example, it was difficult to get responses out of some of the cities and took quite a bit of time. So, we're not really sure about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, final comments? Michael?
Sure. I'll make some comments. So, from what we're hearing, there's likely some potential for revenue, given this, assuming that there is a business someday in San Bruno that could take advantage of this. From most of what I'm hearing, that there is no guarantee, and probably very low likelihood, being that there are barriers to entry, and we've seen what's happening in other cities. So, definitely no guarantee of any revenue. So, to say that this is our diversification plan, I think is ridiculous. If we're going to put this above development, when every other city on the peninsula is, has been very successful with their development plans, yet nobody is selling marijuana, I don't know how you consider that diversification. The state has missed their revenue targets by huge, huge margins. So, it's definitely not the market everybody predicted. We're seeing, you know, we heard some claims that we're losing tax revenue because of these delivery companies that are out there. But we also heard that those companies are hard to tax. So, are we really losing revenue to them, or are they going to continue to operate? Will they continue to do their business and not pay tax to anyone? Not to San Francisco, not to San Jose, and definitely not to San Bruno. Is that really lost revenue there? So, you know, we're competing against this, you know, this market that operates right on the fringe, and we're also competing with illegal sales of marijuana, which have grown since it's become legal in California. They have not been hurt at all by legalization. So, we continue to struggle with that. So, we start taxing. People that can get it cheaper on the street are going to continue to get it on the street. People that don't pay our tax because they get it through a delivery will continue to do that. So, I think there's a reason why no other cities, even the ones that have had ballot measures, are seeing any revenue from this. And I think that the market has been pretty much tapped out. So, if this is a financial decision for some people, I say that it's an ill-conceived way of moving the city forward. The amount of money that we could generate from this, I don't think is worth the effort. And definitely not when we have limited resources right now, and we could be channeling efforts into doing other things. Somebody said that San Bruno should be leading and not following. Well, we're already following in this, and we have examples. The whole rest of our county has gone ahead, and they're just not being successful. So, we do have some, we do have some data. And really, like Mark said, the one data point of where there are dispensaries, they were pre-existing. They had medical dispensaries there before the legalization, and so they were established. They had an established clientele, and everything was already set up for them. But we haven't seen anybody else breaking into the market. I think there's a reason for that. And I'm also hearing, saying, I heard a couple of my colleagues say that, you know, this is something that should be voted on. It should be a decision of the people. And I heard one of the speakers say that the council, it's not the council's job to decide, but I disagree with that. I think it is the council's job to decide. I think it's a huge cop-out for us to say, we're going to wash our hands of it and just throw it out there. We saw the same thing happen with fireworks. The council didn't want to make a decision. They put it on the voters, and now there's all kinds of discord in the city, and the council has absolutely zero power to change anything or make any modifications because they refuse to make a decision. They refuse to take a stand, put it on the voters. So, now nothing can change unless there's another ballot measure. So, saying that the decision to have dispensaries should be on a ballot, I totally disagree with that. If the council thinks that we should have them, then we should take a vote and make it happen. It's in our realm to do it. And if that's what we believe we were elected to do, then we should be doing that. We shouldn't be handing it off. We shouldn't cop out. We should do our jobs and make the decisions that we were elected to make. Also, you know, just listening to the speakers that came out today, it's funny how many people are actually in the business that are out here speaking about it. So, if you talk about throwing this out to the voters, what do you think is going to happen? Just like fireworks, all the fireworks companies came out and just blasted everybody's mailboxes with propaganda about why we should have fireworks. Same thing is going to happen here. You're going to put this out to the voters, and they are going to get a biased push to put this through. So, regardless of how the people may have really felt, regardless of what a fair and balanced election would have looked like, it's going to be biased because there are interested parties that are ready to come here and try to push an agenda that they are going to profit from. So, I think that's another reason why this decision needs to be made by people that are not, you know, somehow going to profit from this. The people that spoke, nobody provided any details on what we should be advocating for. So, everybody said, put it on the ballot. But what, nobody said, put 10% on the ballot. Nobody said, put 5% on the ballot. Nobody said, put yes, no on the ballot. It's like, put it on the ballot. Put what on the ballot? So, there's been no clear recommendation from the public on what exactly they're even advocating for, other than they just want the sale of marijuana. And lastly, my last comment, it's clear that there are people in the community that are very vocal, and they are just determined to remake San Bruno in a way that benefits them in ways that, you know, they want us to be more like San Francisco. They want it to be more like some European city. But San Bruno's San Bruno, and I like San Bruno the way it is. It's why I brought my family here. And so, to have people come here and tell us that we're behind the times, or that we're, you know, somehow hokey for thinking that what we do is right, it's why I came here. And, you know, there are a lot of people in the community that didn't make their voices heard tonight. They're not comfortable speaking in public, but I think they need to be represented as well. And so, if I get overruled on this, so be it. But I think that even those people that are not represented in the meeting tonight, their voices do need to be heard, and not everybody is in favor of this. It's interesting that we had so many people in the community come out and speak against Whole Foods because they said it's going to bring too much business to that intersection, too much traffic, too many cars, too many people in that area. But here we are saying, no, but we want to have dispensaries, and it's okay if we bring in people. Let's channel them in from the airport. Let's bring them from all over the county. So, why is that okay? And once we decide, if we've moved forward with this, and then we have a location, and then people are going to come out and they're saying, well, no, not in my neighborhood. We don't want it here. We don't want it there. And then what? You end up pushing them in a corner somewhere where nobody wants to be. I don't know. You know, everything sounds good when you throw little soundbites at it, and you look at it in a vacuum. Yeah, it's a revenue potential. But it's also about, you know, where, how do we want, we said no to Whole Foods. Whole Foods would have brought a certain level of recognition to the city that we missed out on. But we're okay doing, to make San Bruno the cannabis city, marijuana city. So, just for the sake of getting a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue, possibly, and maybe not, maybe not even that. So, that's all I got.
Okay. I do see two hands up, and I had a comment. I saw Linda, unless, is that correct? Or is that from before?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I said then, Laura, please.
Oh, yeah. I just want to say that I think that, first off, I've been pretty clear that I would have liked a Whole Foods here as well. So, I'll start by saying that, and that ship has sailed. And the other thing is, I just want to make a comment about the development. I'm not saying that we don't need development, or that we're not open to development. What we talk about with diversifying our revenue sources is, let's not just depend on Measure G, which was a promise to the community to repave their streets, right, as our lifeline or as our slush fund. Let's not plan on just development that we, as a community, may or may not like. Like you said, I like San Bruno, right? I like how it is. I don't know. I mean, are you looking at turning it into an overdeveloped suburb? I don't know. But if the only option that we have to get us out of a deficit is development, then we are really limiting where we can go and how transformative that we can be. And so, you know, development, just as a reminder, impact fees were approved last year, and the city lost decades of what could have been made that other cities that are way ahead of us on looked forward to. So, I just wanted to make those comments because I think they weren't entirely fair. And I think that when we're looking at this, it's not a judgment if you don't support it. It's more of saying that I think that this is a potential for revenue. The cities that haven't gotten it, we don't know what they put into it. We don't know what they lost. What we know is the cities that do have commercial have clearly made money. And they are just starting. They're only into their second year, one year and two years, for the two cities that were provided to us. So, I just wanted to make those comments.
Okay. Laura, then, Laura? Oh, I'm sorry, then Marty, apologize.
There were three council members that brought this to this agenda tonight. Councilmember Medina, Councilmember Mason, and Mayor Medina. And I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Medina and Councilmember Mason, but I haven't really heard your thoughts or opinions. So, I'd like to hear from you, Mayor Medina, before we vote.
This is not a vote. This is a direction item only. So, there is no vote tonight.
Okay, before a direction?
Right. Marty, then Rico?
Yeah, I just wanted to give credit, no, I'm sorry, give credit to Michael Salazar's, Councilman Salazar's beliefs and his opinions. I disagree with a couple of those. It isn't a cop-out to allow our residents to vote on something. And it's actually a legal requirement if you're going to tax it. So, if I can confirm with the city attorney if that's correct?
I'm sorry, I was having a side conversation. Can you ask that again? I apologize.
I saw you guys talking over there. That's okay. And you're like five feet apart, so you better move a little further apart.
We have the plexiglass thing over here, so we know that we're being safe.
So, I was just confirming that the voters of San Bruno are required to vote when you're going to increase taxes on cannabis?
That's correct.
So, Councilman Salazar, that's why it should be up to them, for them to decide how to do the tax. This is a study session, so I don't think it's fair to have the public come up with the tax percent. That's within staff's work. Pacifica, and they did a great job in the presentation showing that. And for those people that aren't talking, that you feel that their voices aren't heard, when there's an election, your voice is heard. And the people voted in this past election, and they'll vote again. And so, there's no silent vote. We'll have a good turnout again in our elections, and I think our community's engaged. And Whole Foods could be in another location. That ship has sailed. And the tax on food, you don't get taxes on the food. So, it would still be a great benefit to have, and hopefully, a shop or grocery store like Whole Foods will be one day located at Tanfran. But as you know, we don't control that. We don't get to control the project as it comes forward to us. We get to vote on the whole project. So, I'll leave it to hear our mayor's thoughts, and then we'll give direction.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, may I reply an additional fact to Marty's question?
Yes, sir. Please.
Sorry. I just think, as staff, it's important that we give you all the options that are available to you, and I just want to make sure that we have really clearly done that tonight. So, Marty, one of your questions was to the city attorney, can the voters, are the voters the only one that can approve a cannabis tax? That is yes. I just want to make sure that council knows that there are other options, and that is the regulatory option. The city council can put a regulatory item before the voters. Now, that would not be increasing the tax. The city would only get our existing 1% of the regular sales tax, and then our 0.5% of the Measure G sales tax. So, we would get 1.5%. The other regulatory option is that the city council can pass an ordinance and allow marijuana dispensaries without putting that before the voters. And that was embedded in what we talked about tonight, but it really wasn't highlighted. And I want council to really know the options that are available to you. A tax requires 4/5 vote of the city council to put it on the ballot. A regulatory item requires a majority, three people of the city council, to put that on the ballot. But the city council can also adopt an ordinance by majority, and that would allow cannabis dispensaries. It would not create a additional business license tax to tax cannabis businesses at a higher rate. They would have to pay our normal business license tax, and we would get the 1.5% sales tax. So, just so council knows the full options that are available to you.
Thank you.
So, I, oh, I'm on. Okay. So, as far as, you know, there are a couple of options here. The regulatory is one that has been discussed. And I can tell you, based on the cost factor that would be involved with it, based on the additional, much more in-depth staff time, I'm not prepared to go forward with a regulatory. The other thing, too, is, all I have heard is about the potential resources or the revenue. And in essence, unless you have an additional tax, like which San Carlos did in 218, I called to cities this weekend, then you are getting the 1.5%. So, really, you're not seeing the monies that you're talking about. If a regulatory went on, and you had dispensaries, that additional tax is not going to be there. And unless I'm wrong, you can't just go back and say, we changed our mind. I think you'd have to go out to the vote of the people, or what have you. But you could already have establishments in the community. So, I will just say for myself now, based on the cost, based on the staff time, as far as if, for a regulatory one, then I am not supporting that, as far as my direction, for myself. So, I don't know if that helps guide the conversation a little better, but that's where I stand. As of this evening, with what's happening and what's going on, and with the costs and the additional staff time, I think there's, and not having a tax in place, it defeats that purpose. That's on the regulatory. The only other thing that I personally would be wanting to maybe talk a little bit about is just a potential tax. Because obviously, if that ever does, if these services do come in, then we should be getting more than the 1.5%. That doesn't make it worth the time for all the change and the security and other things that will need to be done, and the time that's going to be put in, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I concur. I believe that if we're going to proceed, that we go the easier, less expensive route to not have the regulatory ballot measure, that is something that could occur afterwards. And we'll see after the election of how that comes out. If the city attorney can correct me, if the ballot measure doesn't pass, then of course, you don't have to spend any more money figuring out about GIS or SEQA. But it does pass, then you'll see by how much, and we can work from there.
Through the chair.
Please.
So, that is correct. The reason why most cities have chosen not to just put a ballot measure on or a regulatory measure on, why most or a regulatory measure on, why most cities have done both, is because I think they have believed that the public should know sort of fully what they're voting for. So if you were to put a tax measure on without a regulatory measure, of course, right now, there are no commercial cannabis businesses that are permitted in the city. So what the tax measure would in essence say is that the people vote to tax certain businesses, whatever they may be, distribution, testing, manufacturing, cultivation. And if the city council were to allow those businesses in the future, that they would be taxed at a particular rate, which would have to be developed in some way with consultants. So the reason why cities have chosen to put both on the ballot at the same time is so that people know that they're not only voting for a tax, but a tax on what exactly and what is being permitted in the city. So that's just a little bit more information in respect to that question.
Mr. Mayor, if I can follow up? However, we will still go through a process of coming up with that regulation where the public would be able to comment and the council would then vote on that regulation.
Well, you could do that at any time. Right now, you could direct staff to amend the ordinances that would allow, that currently prohibit cannabis. And you could say, we would like to allow, you know, A, B, and C kinds of businesses. So that's direction you could give staff at any time before or after the measure passes, if it does pass.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that that is a public process that the council does formally go through and we vote on.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
And I do know we have, there's a 60-day framework. And then I do agree, just to say up or down, I mean, people do want to know numbers. They want to know where. And I think you don't put things on the ballot that don't have more specifics. Because then there's just the, you know, even on Measure N, even though maybe it was communicated, some doesn't, don't feel. It's like, well, that's not what was quite said. And so I think you really do need to offer that so people do know what would transpire. Any other comments from the other colleagues? Or questions, I should say? And or comments? Seeing no hands, I think the only thing then is whether there is a wish to want to look toward a tax and at this time. Because it would take, the other would take three unless we want to see if he wants to have direction and see what the other colleagues say about a regulatory, I don't know, just so that it's noted. But I made my comment clear. I think Marty, I've heard yours. So I think at this point, we should just move on to see if there's support for a tax or if there's not. Unless somebody feels different. Linda?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, no, your.
No, I was just making.
Your mic went off. Any other, any other thoughts at this time?
Does it need, I guess, what's the process? Is it, are you asking for a motion to move forward? But because we're just directing staff. I don't know what you need.
Yeah, this is a give direction to staff. So there would need, if somebody wishes, you know, the only concern, and I know, Mark, you can't quantify it. I understand that there's a lot less economic aspect, a lot less time. But what I am trying to understand is, and I understand because I'm going to go back to, and I respected that Marty was saying, well, please let me know. Please help me quantify that in the best possibility. You know, what are we talking dollars and what are we talking time? And resources of the city staff at this time? The best to your ability. It doesn't have to be exact.
Go ahead. Were you going to say something? For a tax measure, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, not having heard what activities the city council might wish to place on the ballot in terms of a tax, again, it's really hard to say. I can't estimate any less than 50 hours of staff time just because I know how long it took to get to this point. And I don't think that given the circumstances, it's really going to be any less than that.
50 hours and you're still feeling that we would need to invest the, obviously, the $7,000 to $11,000? Or it'd also be, are you feeling there needs to be a poll? Is there HDL? Based on what the council, I know I heard some colleagues, let's do what Pacifica did and bypass having to do polling to save 30K, which was underestimated. So, and any additional thought, Mark?
Well, no, fundamentally, that's a council decision. The only data we have is that the last two ballot measures that were successful did include polling that informed the content and substance of the ballot measure.
Could we, if I may ask?
Please.
For Measure G, did we get all the hours of staff time that it took to get Measure G? Was that reported out at every council meeting as well?
I'm not sure there was a request to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's kind of that there would be probably a 50-hour staff minimum. There's suggestions there'd be polling. So the way I'm looking at it too, would HDL need to be hired?
That would be staff's recommendation to bring on a consultant to provide council with additional information.
My only concern is here now, we're into potentially, you know, $67,000 now, plus staff time. I know there's no SEQA. So this is what's concerning me at this time when we have 60 days. Is, you know, to me, you got to have that in place before you get to the next step. But at the same time, I am concerned about the monies which we're going to be talking about on the ninth. The staffing component in the city, the resources that are starting to, you know, we're having to be mindful of. So this is what is hedging it on for me. And so that's why I keep bringing this forward because I'm, every time I think I ask the question, it goes up in dollars. So you're recommending polling, you're recommending HDL, it's going to be, let's say, $7,000 to $67,000 plus maybe 50 hours of staff time. Is that fair?
That's fair. Just a word on the staff time because it's been the subject of a lot of questions tonight. We're providing an estimated amount of staff time, but at the end of the day, all of your staff are public servants. And if so directed by council, we will spend the necessary time. You know, is there a finite amount of time to work on things? Absolutely. Will other things get pushed off? Absolutely. But if council says that something is a priority, we'll work on it. And so just know that staff isn't providing those hours for a rationale to not do it. We're really just being totally transparent.
Let me ask you this. The council has strategic initiatives on the fourth. Is this something that we should be putting together in this one ball? So we see all the plans, all the times? Because when you say, which I appreciate you're being candid, is, well, something's not going to get done. Okay, well, that concerns me. I don't know what that something is. I'll know on the fourth, when the council comes together and says, here's the 50, 80 things. And now how are we going to prioritize that? So then that to me, but this is, is I'm not knowing what that is. So it's uncertainty.
Right. So I guess my best response to that is we pulled this item out of strategic initiatives because it's really an immediate item. If council says yes, we need to immediately start working on the necessary items to put it on the ballot in advance of that, I believe August 8th deadline to provide everything to the county. And the strategic initiatives are really about next fiscal year, the 2021 fiscal year, beginning in July. And so that's why we're here tonight and not talking about this under strategic initiatives.
Understood. Laura, sorry, your hand? Laura, is your hand up?
I have distractions tonight, unfortunately. I have a dog vet surgery and, sorry, anyway, sorry. I was just going to say that I think it's important to just again be clear, we're in a very challenging time. So any time we pull from staff is taken away from very critical time during a time when we have deficits. And we know, as pointed by a public comment tonight, that supposedly, we're not reviewing the contract well enough in recology. Why is that? Again, we put things back on the burner because something is always a priority. And staff has to kick butt every single time and try to stay afloat because there are so many things in their plate. It's one more thing. It's one more thing. Our list of priorities are long. And I've got priorities. I've got things I want to move forward. I keep waiting to have that strategic study session so we can talk about those things that are priorities. And again, the other point I want to make is that I think it's important to say to you, there's no guarantee in funding. So if there's no guarantee in funding right now, why gamble on the minimum money we have? Because we have a deficit. And finally, if it's about providing the services to San Bruno residents that need this, I remember 12 years ago, a conversation with my son driving in a car as a freshman in high school. Hey, Ryan, how easily available is it for you to get marijuana? And how easily, how long will it take you? Oh, probably within 30 minutes, Mom. Well, I guarantee you that time has shrunk in half, if not less than that. So it's not about not being able to provide the service. It's all about a tax measure. So if we can't guarantee the funds right now, why are we even going down this path? We don't have the funds to spend. I'm not a gambler. I don't want to spend money on something that I can't guarantee some good funds are coming in. A lot of questions still need to be answered. I think we just get to making a decision on whether we ask staff to move forward with spending any more time that we don't have.
I did just look it up. Javon, what you sent to us was 73 potential strategic initiatives that council's looking at for subsequent.
So we need three, just a process question, Mayor?
Please.
So we need three votes to direct staff?
In this particular case, because it's a tax, it would need four out of the five.
Just to, tonight?
Yes, that would give, because if there's not, if there's not four, then they can't move forward. Because if it were to come up at a regular meeting and the vote is the same, it dies for taxes. It needs a four, a fifth vote.
But then I thought tonight, we're not voting on the tax. We're just voting to ask staff to look further into the tax.
Well, I think staff and staff, because they have 60 days, I think they need the direction to know whether to proceed with the time and the investment and move forward to hit the August 8th deadline.
So if I can ask, city attorney, because I thought if it's just to direct staff, it would be three. Let me know.
Yeah, so let me clarify and I guess we'll, we'll just be brutally honest. So I think given, given the time that we have, while it might be tempting to say that three of you could direct staff to proceed and develop a tax measure, that would be fine and perhaps okay in normal times. I would say that at this point, staff would like to know whether there are ultimately four votes to put the measure on the ballot before spending all of the additional time necessary to do yet another staff report and come back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And that's absolutely fair, you know? So I'm for it. And we just need to hear from one other person, one way or up or down, to get this part over with.
And Linda, I'm sorry, did that answer the question? I think just not spend staff time or money, that's why they're asking the question. Because if they started to spend the time and the money and then came back and it was a three-two, then that would be for not.
Right, so it's only three votes are required at this point. But they're saying that they'd like to know the fourth because they don't want, out of courtesy, the city council also, I don't think, wants to waste staff's time. That's fair.
You're correct. Okay, just wanted to make sure that was answered. Michael, sorry, your mic came off?
Well, I mean, we heard the threats and we hear the threats a lot, you know? There's an election coming up and if you don't do it, somebody else will. So I mean, there could be another council here in a few months that's going to be totally pro marijuana and they'll do whatever they want to do. So I think there might be some benefit to having the tax in place in case that does happen. But I am not in favor of spending any staff time or any money to do this in this situation. So if we were to move forward and say, we're just going to do 10% and put that on the ballot and waste no staff time, I might support that. But to spend any level of effort and spend any money that we don't have on trying to develop something, I'm just not in favor of that.
Appreciate that. And we're trying to streamline it is what you're trying to do and minimize time and cost. Laura, what is your thought on the tax?
I ditto his comments.
Ditto, okay. Linda, what is your thought?
Well, why don't we do that? Streamline the process. If you're proposing 10%, let's do it.
Javon, Mark, or Mark, I guess, because this has been your night tonight of presentations. What, would that help us as far as cost and as far as hours of work for staff?
So I'll start and then the city manager can say something. So I think I understand the situation and I understand the city council's desire to not have staff spend any time on a ballot measure. I think that there is no way that staff will not spend time on a ballot measure, no matter how simple it may appear to be. We're not going to copy somebody else's ballot measure and put it out to the city council to vote on or to the public. That's not what you hire professional staff to do. We're not going to make something up. We're going to request and recommend the engagement of consultants to help us develop the measure. And it's just difficult for, I think, any staff, and we have other staff on the phone as well, to recommend placing a ballot measure on the ballot that has really not been vetted by anybody, I guess, to put it bluntly. And so those are my comments.
City manager?
Sure. You know, as a professional, I subscribe to the doctrine of completed staff work. And I take the responsibility to provide the city council with accurate, vetted policy options very highly. And I don't think that we would do anything less than give you our best work product. And I think that good public policy is always informed. And it has an objective. And if the city's objective is to obtain a cannabis dispensary, it may not be the best idea to put a 10% tax on it. And then you put that on top of the 22% state tax, that's 32%. You put that on top of our Measure G tax, that's 32.5%. And so I think if the city's goal is to have a cannabis dispensary, that takes policy analysis, that takes time, that takes options. And so I know it's sort of easy to say, hey, let's just put 10% out there and see what the voters say. And on top of that, to not do that with the regulatory item, I don't think that achieves the council's goal, which would be to put something out to the voters and raise revenue for the city, which is what I've heard through cannabis businesses. I don't know that that would achieve that objective. It would be, it may get a lot of people enticed that we would get a cannabis dispensary, but what we put out would probably not be informed by the reality of the situation. And at a 32.5% tax, I'm not sure that we would get a dispensary given the prevalence of the underground market and the prevalence of dispensaries for people to easily undercut that 32% tax and have it delivered from somewhere that has a lower tax rate. So I think the public policy you want requires staff time. And it requires work. It requires good analysis. And I think you should avail yourself of that opportunity if you want to achieve your goal. And I say that knowing that the goals are not the same out of all five of you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty, I saw your hand. Thank you.
If I could suggest the 6% that Pacifica put in place that achieved a 78% yes vote on with the flexibility for that rate to be changed, it seems like it covers the basis of making sure that we could adjust to the market if need be.
Any, so city manager, including, you're still obviously saying staff time, you're still saying staff resources. And where, you know, that's one thing that was in the presentation. Where's this, where are the resources coming from as far as the economics? Or the consulting for the ballot initiative, et cetera?
We would ask council to make an appropriation from fund balance or reserves to cover it. And appropriation is not on the agenda tonight, so we would come back with that item. But again, don't look at staff time as something as sort of the reason not to. It's.
So you're telling me that this would come out of the reserves?
Fund balance or reserves. I mean, given our budget situation, it would come out of unappropriated available cash, which right now is fund balance or reserves.
And you're already, on the ninth, will be asking us to review further to already potentially. And you're already, on the ninth, will be asking us to review further to already, uh, potentially take from one or both pots, uh, for the, no pun intended, for the, uh, for the, to balance the budget, correct?
The proposed budget has the use of approximately 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars of fund balance and reserves to help balance the 8.2 million dollar deficit.
Along with other, uh, other things that you, the strategy of the staff has come up with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Final comment, Linda?
Oh yeah, so no, I was just going to say, so, um, so council member Salazar, um, mentioned the 10% and, um, I'm just saying if, I don't know, if that's the issue, is a percent and identifying a percent, then maybe we need to talk about what, what we're comfortable with here. And both councilman, and council member Davis mentioned her concern around the staff time. And maybe that's a conversation that we can also have, um, around how we can alleviate that, since that's such a large concern. Because we're here now and the item's here now, if it doesn't get, you know, if it doesn't move forward tonight, then clearly we, we're not going to see it again this year. So I'd rather take the time and have a thoughtful conversation around this, um, to see how we can get to yes.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the mics that are going off. Uh, Marty, you, I have your hand up, but you went, Michael, your mic is on, did you want to speak?
Um, give me a minute, let me gather my thoughts.
Understood. Any, uh?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I would say my concern isn't just staff time, I would say that my concern is also related to funds, because there's no guarantee you're going to get to recoup the funds that you're going to spend to incur that, so.
Okay, so from, uh, uh, council member Davis, it is about, uh, the funds that staff feels they need in order to provide the product, as well as the additional staff time. Michael, you had made mention about the 10%, uh, just coming up with something to try to minimize costs and staff time, which we're hearing from Javon that that may not, uh, it will help, but it may not eliminate, it won't eliminate.
Right, right, and I respect both Mark and Javon's dedication to their, their profession and wanting to do a professional job. You know, I, I'm looking at it from a standpoint where if there, there is definitely an interest in maximizing revenue to the city, maximizing the tax just makes sense. We have, uh, one data point, but a, a good data point where Pacifica went to the 10%, then they're the only ones making a profit, so. It, it seemed like a, like a, a low risk, uh, estimate on, on how to move this forward. But again, I'm, I'm with Laura, I, I just don't think we should be wasting a lot of, a lot of resources right now on trying to push this forward on, you know, on the possibility that we may open a store someday and make some money on this.
Okay, Marty, I saw your mic go live.
Yeah, just, just wanted to confirm that Pacifica is at 6%.
So I, I believe, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, go ahead.
So Pacifica's ballot measure said 6%, but the council can increase it to 10%? And I believe that's what they've, they've done because of the fact that they have four established businesses already.
Got it, got it. And to all my colleagues, you know, this is, this is a difficult time, um, for many, many reasons. And knowing the value and the amount of staff time that it will take to do the work that we currently have forecasted in our budget and the 70 to 80 priorities, I clearly would, I clearly would reduce, um, and be cognizant of, of that fact, that it's a wish list, those, those priorities that I think the council submitted. And there's no way I expected all of them to be undertaken, but it's important to at least talk about them and to hear where at some point maybe we would do it, or, or maybe with this council, we won't do it. So, um, I know we have a meeting in two days and I, um, I think we all are concerned about the staff's load. And so we're not going to overload them. I'm insisting on that we reduce our priorities, um, from 101 down to 12, 10, that we can do. And this is one of those things that we can do to allow our voters to, to decide. Council member Davis, you're absolutely right. There are no guarantees in life. There were no guarantees in Measure G, there were no guarantees in the TOT that we may be pursuing. I'm interested in all those costs too, um, and all the staff time on that. I'm sure it's going to be clearly in this range. So, um, let's, I suggest that we just keep that in mind, that we're not going to overload staff. That, that may have happened in the past, we have to be aware of it. And, and reducing the priorities from my list, I have no problem doing that. So, um, uh, I'll, I'll still wait. I think we can find yes here, but it's understandable if you don't, if you don't want to do it, it's okay. We can agree to disagree respectfully. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's, uh?
Through the chair?
Yep, yes, Laura, and then we'll, we'll wrap this up.
I got my hand raised, I don't know if I should mute it, unmute it, I'm like, anyway, so, so, um, just two comments I actually wanted to make. One was Measure G, and that is, uh, I mean, that's a guaranteed tax, right? We know, um, based on history, uh, that we can anticipate a certain dollar revenue coming in. Now, COVID hit and it isn't, isn't nearly what we expect coming in, but it's still funds that are going to come in, it's guaranteed revenues. And the same for the, uh, TOT tax, the hotel tax, right? We know that people are going to start traveling again. Already starting to hear that, um, that buzz in the hotel industry for future days. I have friends who've already booked their trips to Hawaii. It's going to happen and people are going to come back. We're grateful to have YouTube here, they will continue to, to travel and to fill the hotels. So those are two things that will come in. Again, this is just not a guarantee.
Okay. All right, so, um, hearing what I'm hearing now, I don't know that we have four, and I, I don't want to put words in mouth, I want to make sure that I, I'm, I mean, I've been taking notes, but I want to make sure I know we're having our concerns, uh, rightfully so. Because still on Thursday, uh, even if we scale it down, I'm still concerned on what we're not going to get done too, uh, or what may be put off. But I understand the staff will do what needs to be done. So do we have, uh, I, I guess the thing should be of a tax of any percent, maybe we can start to scope it down. Do we have four members of the council that would want to see staff pursue? Because it won't work on the percent, if, if that's the case. If it's not the case, no use talking about the percent.
And, and Rico, so from what I'm hearing is that even, even if we decide that number, that the amount of work is not going to really diminish for staff. So what I heard from, from Javon and Mark is that even if we, even if we decide the number, they're going to, they're going to go do their, their due diligence. And in fact, they're, they're advising us not to pick a number because we have no idea what that number would, would eventually. It, it decides an outcome, basically.
And, and not to put words in the staff's mouth, but what I heard was, yes, we want to have polling, yes, we want to have a consultant, yes, there's a cost for the election, uh, yes, it will take staff time in order to bring a proper product back. Uh, we're asking for those things and that's what we need to do. So, um, I want to make sure I didn't put words in Mark or Javon's mouth.
That is our recommendation, but it is up to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty.
Right. With all due respect, um, the staff report said that we could do without the poll. And maybe not 30,000, maybe we, we reduce that. You know, by half or whatever it is, I'm okay with, with not, with not having it. And picking, picking the 6% like our neighbor did and allowing it to go up to a maximum of 10. And the market's going to figure that out for us. But to reduce the amount of time and expenditures in getting a ballot measure, that isn't guaranteed. That 62% of San Bruno, uh, Samatail County residents voted for, voted to legalize cannabis, right? Not say legalize a dispensary, but we do, we minimize the, the cost in the poll and, and we, we go from there. Thank you.
Um, and I know we're kind of going back, but I think we can, maybe we could start to finalize this unless, Linda, I know, Linda, I want to make sure that you're feeling the conversation that you, you know, on these matters was important too, as far as costs and, and staff time.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think we have, I, I think it's, I'm not sure exactly where you're, Mayor, but I think we have two council members that, you know, they're, seem to be leaning towards no. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure if we can, um, massage that a little bit more. I mean, we, we had people on the phone today, one who has a successful business in Millbrae interested. We had two other, um, members of the public on the phone interested in possibly opening a business. So, um, the interest is there. We, we again have seen Pacifica, we have seen South City, which I believe is only a delivery and they're close, I think, I believe under a hundred thousand dollars is what the staff report said, which would more than likely, um, replace any cost that was expended in just a year. So, um, I mean, I, I'm not sure, I guess, what more to say, because really it's, the other two council members need to either let us know what more we can do or to make them feel more comfortable with this vote.
Yeah, and, and I know we're talking about, uh, business in this, but that doesn't open up a retail, that's, this is only on the tax, so. That, get that or it doesn't bring in that, it gives a potential should something open up.
But they're all connected, they're all connected.
Anything else from, uh, uh, can we go around one last time and then I'll end up? And then we'll just, uh, I think we can, unless there's more discussion, I'm not trying to shorten it, I just think we're kind of going around the same, the same items. So, uh, Michael, I'll start with you and then, um, and I'll just go down this, the list that I have here on the screen.
No, like I said before, um, if, if this is going to consume staff time to the detriment of some other goal that we've established, then I'm not interested in pursuing it.
Okay. Um, let's see, I'm sorry, uh, Linda?
I'm interested in pursuing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty.
Perhaps we can ask our, our staff of, of what, moving forward with this ballot measure, what would we be putting off? Because right now we don't know, but we know that they're overloaded, but, but we don't know what, what this would replace.
I think we have to decide that.
No, no, we can ask them, he's, he's, their, their staff is right here, that, like, they, here's, when I worked here in San Bruno, when, when, and this is really short. When my manager came to me and said, hey, I got another project for you to, to, to inspect, my first reaction was, okay, what of my other five projects do, which one of those you don't want me to work on? And that's the same thing here, like, yeah, we, we came up with something else, what, what is it? And that's why it's so important to have priorities, right? You've got to run the city in general just to keep it going. But of these additional activities, which we're going to talk about on the fourth, you know, what, what can we do? And, and, and we should set, what's the most important thing? So I'll, I'll see if we, if our, um, staff can give us a little bit of, uh, what, what are we talking about? What's not going to get done if we spend 50 hours pursuing this ballot measure?
Well, I know, I'd kind of pose that and then, um, I don't know if they, well, and let's, let's be candid too with, with what's going on. That may be an immediate hard task with, uh, the curfew and the shelter in place, but to Marty's question, uh, city manager?
Sure, uh, let, let's parse this out. And why don't I begin by saying, you know, some part of me is uncomfortable with, um, the significant, um, discussion around we can't do X because of staff time. Again, we're public servants, you're the elected representatives for this community, uh, we take our priorities in our direction from you. Staff does let through me as a city manager, um, and the city attorney supports you as well. We sort of had, had a discussion about this earlier today, um, when we were calculating up the hours. And we were actually, um, sort of doing a test Zoom of our presentation tonight to prepare and sort of counted, uh, seven people that were here, uh, as we were going through preparations. And, you know, we spent about an hour and a half this morning preparing for the, the discussion today and going through, um, all the various scenarios to prepare for your, your, your questions that we couldn't anticipate, but we wanted as professionals to be prepared. And so while we estimated on the low end 50 hours, the honest answer is it's a bit of a question mark, on exactly how many hours, uh, it will take, um, to do the, the job that is required. And what we also talked about was, you know, it's sort of not always what comes off the plate, because oftentimes things are added to the plate and we take it on and we still do everything else. And the, the, the people that work on this, um, or have worked on bringing this item before you, uh, it's your city attorney, it's your city manager, it's your community economic development director, and it's your finance director. Those are the core people, correct me if I'm wrong. And the city clerk and the police chief that worked on bringing this item before you, nearly all of those, uh, will be involved in, in bringing any ballot item to you in addition to supporting, uh, consultants. I wouldn't think about what's on the 2021 strategic initiative list, because frankly, all that stuff is for next fiscal year. This work has to be done within the next 60 days. And frankly, due to COVID-19, due to the, the civil unrest, um, and, you know, we're all sort of working on critical things that are still going to have to get done. And if this council directs this, we'll put it in the hopper, we'll work with the consultant, um, you know, things, uh, will get done. I can't say that if you say this, X is going to come off the plate. I can't sit here and say, if you say yes to this, Y will be delayed another two weeks. I, I don't have that level of, of detailed analysis, and it's just not me. It's, it's sort of a, an, it's an interdisciplinary team of over five departments that work to give you the professional advice. So what I, I would really say to the city council is, I think as policymakers, as elected representatives for the democracy here in San Bruno, you have to look within and say, is this something that you want to do? And then your, your staff will mobilize to support you and get it done.
Okay, um, let's see, Michael heard from Linda, uh, Marty?
I think I've spoken enough already, I think it's up to, uh, where, where Michael and Laura are. Be honest.
No, I, I think it's, you know, the, like I said earlier, um, sorry, I, um, you know, Mayor Medina, you brought this forward, council member Mason, and Marty Medina, you've made very clear statements of where you're at, I think you guys vote on it, you just, I mean, you decide what you want to do. I think you know where we're at, I, I just, I don't know why we're sitting here for the next 30 minutes trying to have a discussion about staff's time. And I think you put, you continue to put staff in an awkward situation, because they're always here to do what we ask them to do, regardless of what it takes. Here it is, it's 10 to nine at night, we have staff that should be at home, for their safety, they should be at home. So let's just move forward and make a decision.
That's why I'm asking you whether you want to have sea attacks on the ballot.
If, if we were to move forward with that, yes, it would have to have a tax on the ballot, I would not support it without. But are we going to ask the question, where are we going to move forward with this on the ballot?
That's what I'm asking right now, they're asking if there's four people, and that's what I'm asking.
Whether or not you want to have a tax on the ballot, yes, it would have to come with a tax on the ballot, I think I made that clear earlier.
Okay, so then you would support having staff do?
No, I would not support it, I made that clear all night long.
All right. Okay, I think that now it's clear, um, and I empathize with, uh, both sides. At this point, staff, uh, direction is it is not to proceed forward. And, um, is there any, on my agenda, does that give the direction staff that you need?
Oh, excuse me, through the chair, I continue to ask for your opinion, if you want to bring this forward, can, do you support it? Is it something that you would support? Is it something that you would support?
It needs four folks, first of all, in order for it. What they've asked for us, if there's not four, to not have it moved forward, so they don't use city resources financially or staff time. That's why we're asking the question, and if it doesn't have it, then we're done.
No, I I actually disagree. I think the minutes reflect where you stand, Mayor.
Yeah, I I've made it clear that I was okay with moving forward, but I want it simplified as far as having a tax, because the tax is necessary in order to re, to have any type of revenue that everybody's talking about the potential of not knowing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You made that clear. I I I said earlier, I concurred with you, so so that's clear.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Uh, staff, do you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on June 9th, 2020 at 7 o'clock. But as you know, we do have one on the fourth, but the regular council meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty.
I'm sorry, did, I was a little distracted at the beginning. Um, would this be an opportunity to remind everybody of the curfew?
Oh, it's okay. Uh, we did say that at the beginning of the meeting. Javon spoke about the curfew, and it's 8:30 to 5:00 AM for the next two days.
Right, just want to make sure that people that didn't catch it at the beginning that we are under curfew, so thank you.
You're welcome. Good night, all be safe.